Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the work session for Norfolk School Board for April 10th. Ms. Tanner, could you please call the role?
Basin.
Here.
Planton.
Present.
Abriel.
Present.
Jordan.
Here.
Stone.
Here.
And Buffalo.
Here, thank you. We have a very lengthy agenda today, and I don't want to take up too much time that I don't, that I don't have to, but I do, glad to see everyone back from spring break as we approach the last quarter of the school year.
Goodness.
Wow. So with that said, Dr. Burzong, I'm going to pass it on to you.
Good afternoon, Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, team, administration, and our community. First on the agenda, we have Mr. David Sturts. He's our educational and facilities planning consultant, and he will come forward today, and he will be able to address many of the items, if not all of the items, that you requested that he be prepared to address this afternoon. So we're so glad to see Mr. Sturts and his power tie this afternoon.
You, I'd wore this specifically looking for that comment. You said it once, I was like, I'm gonna see if she's in, and she's in again. This is my Sharon tie. Good afternoon. Yes, ma'am. It is good to be with you as always, and I'm going to give you an overview of our planned work for the remainder of this calendar year on educational visioning and planning to set up the portfolio plan to follow with beginning into community engagement into the fall in this plan, but taking significant time on the front side to dive in with the leadership team, the academic team, on what it is we are presenting, why are presenting, why are we presenting it in terms of options for rearranging the facilities master plans to follow, what we're calling the portfolio plan, based upon what's best for students and best outcomes and accessibility for all. The point of this is to give you an overview of that scope and sequence, and then to address questions you may have about that, and to take notes, as I always have my notebook here. What are there any particular items that you would like us to explore in our research side on this route outcomes prior to the plan? As came up, just in case it's not clear, Cooperative Strategies, as the name was, is now Woolpert, where the artist formerly known as Cooperative Strategies. And we were just acquired, and that's becoming official, so you're just going to start to see me wear more blue and with a W, but it's the same people, just new partners. So with that, I'll get into it. As you know, just a brief history here, this is in part context for those looking at the presentation, the context that you are more than familiar with. Historically, in facilities master planning with the district, since I was a wee lad starting walking your buildings for capacity in 2013, we have been noting the annual demographic shifts over time and utilization impact, and that, that has, that trend line has continued to follow. What we see in the upper left there is that slight steady decline year over year, about 500 students per year. We have been looking at capacity, of course, and then conditions of the buildings, and our strategy on how to approach conditions were radically changed with ESER funding and COVID. And so that made what was an annual three and a half million a year to deal with in all facilities budgets as a general rule, to making that head and shoulders more for a short period of time, which necessarily pivot our, pivoted away from a capacity inclusion in the plans and focusing really on how do we take care of our HVACs or roofs as best as possible, given this once in a generation money. On top of that, following that, we're looking at, so what's the, in light of the continued declines in enrollment, what's the, the cost elements that we can fix to our buildings, and how do we include that meaningfully in our facilities master planning moving forward, knowing that in the current climate with this enrollment declines and so forth, that that's, that's money, that's walking, that's leaving your system, and that is money that we want to find ways to condense and round resource our kids and our teachers in the classroom better. And we need to be intentional about how we do that in subsequent master plans. This is not a facilities plan, this is not just an academic plan, this is not a demographic plan, this is not a financial plan, it is all of the above dialoguing with each other. And that has come to be quite an acute reality for us of late, realizing that we have to think of those finances, operations, as well as capital in our plan. When we started this, this phase, we wanted to first start with, you know, the do no harm statement that, that is familiar in medicine, we wanted to take it here to, before we start looking at portfolio configurations and changing up. You have a lot of small schools, and the natural bent toward where a plan this would go is fewer schools with larger enrollments. We're not talking Texas-sized, large schools, you are Norfolk, you're not going to be a massive district in that sense. But as before, we started to do the work on engagement, wanted to first test enrollment data, outcomes data in Norfolk and in the state overall, and to see as we approach this, if, if we're looking to go from averages in the mid 300s in terms of enrollments in elementaries to mid 400s, is that a probable cause for harm in terms of student outcomes? Because that's where the shift is probably heading in that direction and any kind of change. There's no plans, but just logically, the direction, and the answer from that study was no, that there was no, no indication that larger enrollments at any grade level led to decreased outcomes, except for perhaps at high schools, there looked to be some diminishing returns after 2,200 kids in the state of Virginia high schools relative to SOL scores. And of course, we looked at building conditions in Norfolk, seeing that that had a, about a commiserate effect size on chronic absenteeism, as does SES, that's a factor. So building conditions, having a direct relationship there to a factor we want to, to address chronic absenteeism was an important outcome in addition to the enrollment study that was performed. So that set our baseline, that we can proceed in looking at a study that would include a reconfiguration and some newer, fewer, without probable cause for doing harm regarding to outcomes. In fact, some of the data suggested quite the opposite, that there, there seemed to be benefits at larger enrollments across the state in a longitudinal study. That's all the history you know. Now, on to what this particular phase is focused on. The particular phase that we're at right now in visions, that we start in the month of May, here in the coming weeks, to work intentionally with your leadership to look at what, if you were to reconfigure your portfolio, what that means is the numbers of schools, the locations of schools, the grade configurations of schools, and the sizes of those schools. That is what the portfolio is. In addition to that, another dimension would be the conditions of those schools. We want to kind of settle in what that portfolio is relative to where your population can be served as a primary driver, and see how do we maximize the investments to improve the conditions along the way. So what we're, we're looking at is starting with what would be a dominant configuration for your district moving forward that could be different than today. Today, you have a pre-K 5, a 6, 8, a 9, 12, and then you have some early childhoods, and some K 8, and some 3, 8. You have an amalgamation, a variety of configurations. As you start looking at a portfolio change, the natural thing to do is what, to look at is what is a, what is the appropriate configuration for our district as we change? Downsize the number of facilities, but upsize the resources in those facilities, the conditions of those facilities, what do we want to go with? Is it, A, the same configuration, and just paring down the numbers of schools and increasing the investments in those capitals and operating? The other two natural ones that we're going to start with, want to start with, are looking at a K 6, 7, 12, or a K 8, 9, 12. These are configurations that urban districts in particular have looked at across the country as the enrollments have chronically declined, as ways to do exactly what we're aiming to do, which is concentrate resources while providing access to schools in warm, safe, cool, dry, and educationally adequate and highly resourced school environments. That's the target, that's the focus. There are examples of this, Cincinnati, K 6, 7, 12, Chicago, and others, K 8, 9, 12. And now, they're a little bit bigger than you, but the same reality of a school environment and chronic enrollment decline, how do we pivot our portfolio to facilitate our operations and our investments in our kids and our teachers? So what we want to start with is a survey of districts, like districts who have gone through this before you, have done these changes, and have years behind their belt in those changes that we can study. And we can look at outcomes, we can look at any changes therein, and we can see what can we learn from those similar districts who have done this configuration change before you. That we would come as a team, prepared to present some of those findings to your staff, to your leadership, and that we would work through benefits and challenges, we would work through other things to research and to explore relative to configuration changes and outcomes and so forth, and how that might land here and be appropriate or not here in Norfolk. That would be heavy on, with your academic team and, and your operations team, because we want to look at it not, we want to look at from student outcomes, that is the driver. We also want to look at operations, because outcomes are going to be influenced by what we can afford to invest in our kids. And so it is not a siloed approach, we want to look at it with all of your chiefs' perspectives. Once that data has been vetted internally with your team, which we thought that summertime through August was an appropriate time, because that's not a great time for community engagement typically, and that's a good time for diving in deep. The inbox gets a little quieter, and we can focus on, on going deep on some topic. Then, between August and October, what we anticipate doing with the leadership team is to take that research, those different data points, and to vet through what configuration options are viable to bring to the community. I do not want to do a bunch of research in a vacuum, show up for a meeting with the leadership, and then just go out to the public with ideas that several of the chiefs are going, that'll never fly here because X, Y, Z, so on and so forth. We want to vet all of that internally to see what is, what could work, what could we potentially get behind? Once that is done, we have our initial internal options ready to present. At that point, we anticipate meeting with a reconstituted steering committee. So looking afresh at a steering committee, where my goal is always somewhere between 40 and 60 members representative across the community. And having that meeting after, we've done a lot of this data vetting, can help us understand probable impacted communities, and who would be most representative to be on this committee. So we would take our time in the fall in constituting this committee, and then meet with them initially in November to review the background data, the history that you all know well, the outcomes of the visioning process from May to August, and the vetting from the chiefs, what the viable options are, and if there are any where that considered that were not viable, why they were not viable, and then getting their feedback, what are their takes on the data, the trends, the benefits, and the challenges of the different options being presented. We are not, at this point, looking at specific school changes, we're looking at broad, how shall Norfolk Public Schools be organized in terms of its school portfolio moving forward in light of the, of the enrollment declines historically and projected, in light of the building conditions, in light of where populations have shifted over time, in light of desires for increasing, primarily increasing our resources for our kids, and promoting diversity, inclusion at every step of the way, and access. Primarily, in my mind, looking at this, is making sure that the ultimate recommendations that come for our schools address all of the desired data points that we're aiming for financially, educationally, operationally, and demographically, and that every family has equitable access to these highly, high-quality, highly-resourced facilities. So once their feedback is, has been received at this meeting, we would then come back to you in December for a review. This is what we found in the visioning, here is what we have, here are the options, here's what your leadership said, here's what the steering committee said, and ultimately, here's what we're ready to take forward in the final phase of this long-range portfolio plan, which is where the concentrated engagement would be. And per usual, I just blew ahead of the next few slides, talking about them, so I'll go back. But what these slides do is because that text is small, is call, call out what I said we would do. We would look at similar-sized districts with different dominant configurations, those that I mentioned there, K 5, 6, 8, 9, 12, K 6, 7, 12, K 8, 9, 12. Look at the accessibility ratios of overhead, the teacher expenses, student achievement, all of the financials of the, and the, and the outcomes that we're looking for. Study teacher and tenure turnover rates, that's something that you all, I took in my notes that you all requested that we look at in this process, so that's back in January, so that will be included in some of this post-mortem, I'm looking at districts who have gone through a change, to the degree that the data is available. Then, here's our work in August to October, creating capital and operating budget estimates for adopting each of these dominant configurations district-wide, including the estimated impact on student diversity and access to nearby schools, working internally with leadership to present findings and determine pro-cons for different viable configurations. So we really want to try to map out, if you choose path A, here's what the facility impacts would be, here's what the probable operational budget impacts would be, access and so forth, so we have a multi-dimensional perspective of the pro-cons. Steering Committee, again, here's your 30 to, to 60, 30 to 50 citizens representative of the community, finding feedback on the options. And then here, Phase 3, the idea would be in 2025, then, the engagement would follow the following sequence. We would have focus groups. Focus groups are where we are meeting with populations and interest groups that are maybe regional across the entire region, but represent certain population groups, interest groups, and the like, that are in this plan, that impact the entire community, and so we want to make sure that we're representative there. Those are typically 60 to 90-minute small group sessions, so we have folks come in and, and get to, to ask questions specific to their focus. In addition to having the traditional community meeting, going out to the high schools, which is typically the best way to do this, high schools or middle schools, cafeteria, presentation, small group, feedback and the like afterwards, as you've become accustomed to, and of course, surveying, steering committee meeting, and leadership meeting. And this follows, the idea is that we follow through this cycle to develop, to evaluate the options, rather, we already have options developed, we are evaluating them through this process, and upon receiving that evaluation, working with the leadership team to draft a recommendation, and go through the same thing again. Focus groups, community meetings, surveys, steering committee, and at that point, once we've done that second round of engagement throughout on the draft recommendation, that is where we believe we'll be comfortable coming forward with here, was what we think the plan is. That plan will not just be, hey, you should go to a K 6, 7, 12, have fun. It will be specifics in terms of which schools would be the best, probably the most logical solutions to, to adopt to this configuration, why, and they would be because of their locations and access to populations, their conditions and the ability or inability to invest, the site and the limitations or accessibility availability of the site. We want free space, we want good sufficient parking and driving and all that stuff. And utilization capacity, of course, what's best fit, what can you operate to make all the numbers work for the population? So that, to, to clarify, at the moment, we are just starting Phase 2 here, and the plan is to have this done through December of this year, ready to engage the community at large through these focus groups, community meetings, and additional steering committee meetings, starting in January of '25. And the anticipation here is that by May of '25, done. So with that, questions, comments, particular interested in items that you'd like us to explore in the visioning and research phase?
Okay, board members, you heard the presentation, open up for discussions, so we're going to go Dr. Gabriel, and then Ms. Basin.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rizard, it's very nice to have you back with us again today. This is, this is a conversation that we are having as a board with you as the educational planning expert, and I'm glad that we're having the conversation, that we're allocating time for this. In March of last year, you shared with us that between 2006 and 2022, our surplus capacity in Norfolk Public Schools was between, we went from 2,000, almost 2,000 students, to now almost 10,000 students. And then you said that by March 1st of, I'm sorry, by 2023, our surplus capacity is scheduled to be over 13,000. You also mentioned that we will be operating with 14 extra schools by 2031, which will cost us $15.6 million. I say this to just share with my colleagues here, that in April of 2013, Norfolk Public Schools issued the first RFP for educational planning. I don't think we have the time to wait until 2025. I think we need to act now. We are representatives of our city, our constituents have elected us to make decisions on their behalf, I fully respect the engagement process, and I want our community members to be along in all of the conversations, because the decisions that we impact directly impact them, their families, their children. But for Norfolk Public Schools, with what we have on our portfolio right now of 50 schools, and 50 schools that includes other buildings that we are operating, I don't think we have the luxury of time right now. What I would like to see, and if my colleagues would, would share in this, I would like for us to just go ahead and dive into some of those plans as soon as possible, looking at the different options, the different scenarios. Because the longer that we wait, the more overcapacity we are, the more, the opportunity for us to really put highly qualified teachers in front of students and not depend on long-term subs and, and other things that the division is working very tirelessly on. But I feel like the longer that we wait, the more time that we are losing with our And so I would like for us to accelerate this process, and I would like to see what these options, what the potential options look like sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Basin?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. I think Dr. Gabriel's comments are a good segue to some of the comments I have as well. So in light of what Dr. Gabriel has just, you know, stated in terms of diving into the options and plans, you know, and one of the things that I wanted to bridge the conversation that we had, the discussion that we had at the last meeting on this topic in January, which I thought was really great amongst the board, in terms of how we want to move forward through this, through this work. And I think that before we dive into the plans and the options, I think that we have work to do, and that's, you know, some of the things that we talked about at the last January meeting, in terms of our board goals and our non-negotiables, and you probably recall that.
Yep.
Conversation, discussion, and I know Mr. Jordan had, you know, kind of gave an overview of how those goals and non-negotiables could be used to develop a rightsizing plan, which is really what, what we are talking about here in terms of, you know, looking, some of the things that Dr. Gabriel just talked about, and then, of course, our educational programming, which is, should be front and center in terms of producing positive student outcomes. So with that, with, you know, we had a lot of discussion about it, and while, you know, I know I haven't been on the board since 2013 when this first started, but I have been very much involved as a steering committee member at that time.
Yep.
And I've been through DeJean Richter, through every iteration.
Yeah.
You know, of your company along the way, and so in that spirit, you know, I, I hear and, and have probably expressed my frustration over the years as well, in terms of this process and the, the, what has seemed like disjointed and disconnected educational planning in the division over the years, we know through, through the turnover that we've experienced as well. And so with that, I think that we have this great opportunity right now to take our time, and I know time is not what anybody wants to talk about, and time is not on our side, but I hesitate to rush in and dive right into creating options without having a clear focus on our goals and our non-negotiable, with, with, at the same time honoring our non-negotiables, which I think is really important, otherwise I think we're going to miss the mark. And through that, one of the things that I would like the board to kind of think about and agree to is that we start while in this, while, while not diverting from the plan that you, the timeline that you have presented here, that we also start immediately kind of setting up, you know, community listening sessions to talk about our goals, the non-negotiables with community members, just as we did before, that we start doing that work this spring and through the summer, and that prior to our retreat, that we then come back at that retreat time, and that we say, you know, are these the, you know, these are the goals, are we representing the community's vision and values? And that, I think, by, by doing that, I think we're bringing the community along with us, and that when we do get to a point of diving into the options, diving into, you know, decisions around what schools we may, you know, want to focus on, you know, consolidating, or, you know, thematically, you know, maybe restructuring, I think we're going to have greater buy-in, and I think there's going to be this consistency across a division that I think is going to benefit us more greatly in the long run than doing, you know, diving in kind of blindly without having a bigger picture plan in place, and without our goals front and center, our student outcomes goals foot front and center. So.
I appreciate both of your, your feedback on this, and if I may, I, I live in the tension between those two comments and trying to find where, where the right thread is here, because I know, having been around with you all on this journey, the changes that are, who come from this plan will be big. There is no way around it. And how to best get that done is part art and part science. And so I appreciate the feedback, and that's part of why we're here.
Could I, could I just add one more thing?
Please.
And I think because I, I want to share this, because I think of one, along with Dr. Gabriel, I know, but, well, actually, a few of us, but I also am a parent in the district, and I've seen what some of our educational, I've, I've felt the impact, the direct impact of some of our educational planning decisions have been, some good, not so great, in terms of well-thought-out plans and some not well-thought-out plans. And so I want us to be very careful, fast doesn't mean that it's going to be well-done, and that it's going to be beneficial. Fast doesn't mean that it's going to be well-done, and that it's going to be beneficial for our students. And so I just want to put that out there.
I'll even, I don't even worry about it.
What? Name to end.
That's what goes. Throw it over in the car test.
On the side.
Ms. Basin, did you?
No, I just, I just wanted to share that perspective, yeah.
Mr. Clanton?
All right, thank you. I'm kind of between the middle of my two colleagues on this thought here. Yeah, y'all have heard me say it many times before, that we've got to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. I do believe that there is a sense of urgency in the respect of, that we need to make a decision. I think, and I've shared this with our chair, I'm in full transparency, that my number-one objective of the board leaving out of here today is that we have a plan, that the administration is with, with the consultant, that we send clear direction, that this timeline is what we agreed to, or we made some modifications or whatever it is, but that we don't leave this room here today without giving clear direction, because then it becomes another month, two months down the road, and we know how that can easily get out of, out of hand there. For me, student outcomes, of course, and, you know, I know we have parents and, you know, some uncles and, and others who are here, but we, we see this. And when I say thread it down the middle, you know, going back and, and having board conversations and stuff, we hear this stuff all the time. We, we live it, we know. Number-one thing parents want to make sure is that their kids are going to come out well-prepared for life, career, and moving forth. Second thing out of that one, that they have a safe environment. Now, we hear about that, you know, they're in a classroom that's not being disruptive, that other learning, and, you know, we, we hear about all these different things, and that we're meeting those needs and meeting the other things that are going on so that the child can come to school each and every day prepared and ready to learn. So I, we know those things. I mean, that's, that's a given. But I think based on the timeline that you've given us here, it does allow us the opportunity of going back and saying, hey, look, it's, there's a different question. Not the obvious, but we're talking about the physical structure, but I think, well, even when we were talking about, like, now we've got the feasibility study that's going on at Booker T., and it was very clearly said that you get the feasibility study because you get the academic program first and not really build the building around the academic, you know, build the building first without the academic program. So I'm saying this for me, and it's not new. I'm always looking at the outcomes. I, and I think we've had this discussion before, I really like to look at what it means to, when we say add choice, and when I say choice within the school division, particularly at the high school level, and career, whether or not there's career academies, whether or not, there's some type of pathway that provides opportunity for students. I constantly hear my nephew, who just graduated last year, in a conversation in respect of, how do we, Uncle C, how do you make it so that kids want to come to school? And I see programs, some that are just across the water, that show in the data that when you do certain programs and put things in place and create environments where students can come together, who have like-minded thoughts, so they're, they're in academy, and that's whatever the structure you may create, that does less disciplinary issues, they attend school very more regularly, many times the academic success is greater, because the students want to be there. We're not dealing within a time when myself or even a lot of us went to school, where that was just a given. We now look at it, and you look at these steady declines in numbers, and that's just, and I also want to stress, and I think you've said this too, it's not a Norfolk thing. It is a nationwide decline. So I don't want anybody ever to look away and, just because we're looking at it, we're at 13,000 students less, that it's a Norfolk Public School thing, or anything with the quality of what our students are, or what our teachers and what's being offered, that there is a national decline, there's a lot of different parameters that are in that. And urban education as, as a whole. I talked to a parent last week at Lambert's Point, who, kids were at a elementary school, had a situation, she decided to take her children out of Norfolk Public Schools, put them into a, a private school. This private school now is going belly up, and she's trying to make the decision. I did not, in full transparency, didn't tell her I was on the school board. I just had a conversation with her. And I asked her what her real issue was, and she says, you know, it was just that one thing, and I wanted to try something else. And then I asked her, I said, well, do you know what public education offers you, and some of the other different things that are there? And she had no idea. And then she says, you know what? I, I think I'll give public schools a try, and give it, give it another try. And she was talking about where she was at and where her kids could possibly go, and some of the different things that we have. There's a lot of great qualities and things that we have in place, and so my big thing goes back again, creating that opportunity. Does that look like? And, and, and I'm not just saying that I'm stuck in one way, but what creates an environment for parents wanting to send their kids to public schools, for students wanting to go to public schools, and knowing that at the end of the day, that they, for the, for this generation right now, they need to know what the end game is in mind? It's not because I told you to go to school, it's not like my mama told me, you know, you can go to school and you're going to participate and do what you need to do, and, and she would remind me, don't embarrass me, I'm going to come embarrass you. I mean, that was a reminder, you know? I didn't fear my teachers and administrators, I feared Patricia Ann Clanton showing up school. But that's not the case. In many cases, sometimes, you know, we, we've all seen it, that it's not too far off from each other, but how do we create that opportunity? And so I don't know if, so in other words, I'm putting a lot of things that are out there, because that's what I would like to see in the conversation when we look at structure, because that's going to make a big deal. I mean, you've given us, you know, 10 elementary schools, two middle schools, a high school, you know, that could get us at the 85% capacity rate down there.
Yep.
Well, what type of educational programming we're offering now, and you said we've got a lot of different things, you know, we, we moved an elementary school into, to the middle school and created a 3, 8, and somebody, we got a lot of different things that are going on. How do we get this thing based on some best practices of like-minded districts around the country for the outcomes? And that is, when we look at business, community, anybody who's coming into Norfolk, to Norfolk, that they can say that quality public education is taking place here, that we've got it together, we've got a good system, and that people want to move here, businesses and industry field is overproducing more, because I'm not saying that we're not producing quality graduates, but we're producing more quality graduates who can go into the workforce. So that's my thing, when I look at this. And so I say, thread, thread it down the middle, yes, let's get some of this conversation going on, let's move it up here, but if I'm hearing that the recommendation is to come back to the board based on the committee in December of this year, correct?
Yes.
And then based off of that, you would have a full plan that would get into this school, that school, this location, because you've gone to the community. That is my number-one commitment, because we have seen it, when we do not involve the community in this process, and we get ahead of the community, and then not involve them and walk them with us, that's when we get the unnecessary backlash, that people feel as though we're not being transparent, and that they've been taken for granted. And so I don't want to move too fast. I do want to say that there's, that we need to do this, but we got to make sure that the community voices are there at the table, so that when we get to this particular point of recommendations, the people know, whether or not, you may not like it all the way, but they know that we've done our due diligence and included the voice of the community.
Ms. Basin, then, Ms. Stone.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to quickly counter some, not counter, actually, just point out something Mr. Clanton just said. So I, and clarify something that I said. So I'm not suggesting that we, I'm not suggesting that we go off the timeline. What I'm suggesting is that we have, on that slide with the timeline on it, is that we have our work to do, our timeline of work to do, because everything that you just talked about, about creating environments where students can learn, you know, workforce readiness, producing quality graduates, all of those things, those are part of our goals, those are part of our non-negotiables, those are things that are, that, those are the community vision and values. And so those are the, that's the work that we have to do first before we get to that point. So I'm not suggesting that we're delaying anything or anything, but that we are being focused about our work, so that when we get to a point of talking about the educational planning, the programming, that we're talking about it with those non-negotiables and, uh, goals at, at the front.
If I can on that one, and I, and I appreciate you, Ms. Basin, clarifying that one there, but what I just want to make clear is that if you have, you're saying that you're going out to the community, and, and your plan here. And I also hear that there, Ms. Basin, you're saying there's the work that we need to do as the board members. What I don't want to happen is that being in conflict with what's happening out there. If we're saying that this is together and, and being strategic, and board members are going along with the part of the process that we've adopted here, because they're a part of the goals that we do that, but I don't, I don't want to see two parallel things that, that are sending the wrong message out.
Well, and I think there's a misunderstanding about what, what it is I'm saying, but I don't want to, you know, monopolize the floor right now, because I know there are other questions, but can we put a pin in that and come back to what, what I'm referring to in terms of the board's community listening sessions, which is not about the ed planning, which is not about the recommendations that they are making?
Are you, you're talking about board goals?
I'm talking about the board goals, that our listening sessions are around what our goals, you know, what we have established, what our non-negotiables are, those are, that's what I'm talking about, not what Mr. Sturts is put forth.
Okay, so educating the community about the board goals?
Right.
Got it, okay.
The board's work, right.
Ms. Stone, then, Mr. Jordan.
All those comments made me rearrange what order I was going to go in. So to somewhat respond, first, I hear all the comments, and I unfortunately agree with all of them, because I understand the sentiment behind all of them, and it's all important decisions, and there's so many ways to approach it. My suggestion from what I'm hearing right now would be, let me back up. As I've made, as I've said in many of our meetings, my, my focus and my, my frustration sometimes is our, how we find it difficult to follow even just how we operate as a board strategically and along a certain timeline that is easy to follow, and that is something we're working on, and we've had discussions over. And so I think there is definitely a way to address all of those things by being clear about how we're addressing, how we're, I'm repeating myself, but I think we can come into our retreat and be able to clear and be, come out of our retreat with some very clear directions about what we expect with board goals and non-negotiables, so that that can be shared as they work through all of these, through the visioning and options and committee, and there, it's at least worked into the plan here that there are at least two major board meeting dates, and that way we can continue as a board to get more feedback on our own, if we want to bring that to the discussion, and if we want to find a way to do that in an organized way, like listening sessions, we can sort of discuss doing it. Prior to the retreat, we're getting, I know it doesn't feel soon, but it is soon, but since there is a meeting date worked in there to, in December, we can probably work a plan out to at least be able to bring all of that to December and be able to continue the conversation there. My biggest thing would be to make sure that what we're doing as a board doesn't slow down the process here, because time is important, and what I don't want to see happen is that we pause and ask for more time and extend something that really needs to happen, and I don't want to rush it either, because something this big needs to be done intentionally. And so I appreciate what you said about art and science, and so my first comment slash question, I guess, it's more of a comment, is just, I think sometimes it's easy to get stuck in data, because data's easy to analyze, and, and that way we're able to say, no, the data says this, but like Mr. Clanton said, some of the issues that we're seeing within the schools are nationwide, so the data is only going to show you what is currently happening nationwide, which might not necess, might not tell you the full story or what other options there might be. And so there might be other studies and other things to look at, to look at alternate ways of the way the school day can be set up and have, schools should be set up. I just want to be able to hear some of that as we move through the discussion about other things that can, that we know can impact, or we think that would be helpful. And then I think it might be baked into this a little bit. I know we're talking about committees and, I, listening sessions is the words I have in here, focus groups. The only thing, the words that I don't see in here are teachers and students, and so I, it might be assumed within here that those committees and those focus groups would take into account teachers and students.
Yes, ma'am.
But I want to be sure that those things are actually focuses, so we're getting feedback from teachers, and I want to be cognizant of the fact that asking for feedback from teachers and students means that certain types of people and certain types of students are more likely to volunteer for those types of opportunities, so finding ways to get feedback from the students and teachers that might not be likely to personally engage. And so I know we don't want to take away too much time from the school day, but how can we get feedback from students when we have access to students? How can, without taking time out of their free time, how can we get feedback from teachers? I just want to know that they are included in the conversations, because the students themselves might very well have decent feedback on why they don't want to be here, why, why they're, why, or why they want to be here, or what, what are their biggest, what they want more of, what they want in their day. And one thing that I didn't see here, and I guess the question, has it been considered doing a K2, 3, 8, 9, 12 model? Has, does that come up?
If I may, respond to that.
Yeah, please.
So that can be explored. I can tell you that I started with what I have observed being more commonplace in terms of districts who are, are shrinking in enrollment in an urban setting. This is what I've seen, and it makes sense to me why, from an operational standpoint, from a facility standpoint, from a population and accessibility standpoint, and so that's where I'm starting. There are, of course, alternatives to be explored in that. And trying to provide, to, to sort of respond to a more global sentiment, the intention is for this, this is methodical by design in this, with sort of this move slow to move fast, in this sense, was the idea. Having been through a few rounds previously, very much open to, to your feedback and ideas about, about timeline, and as you said, the idea of coming out with clear direction on timeline and deliverable expectations would be my ask.
And maybe some of my thought on that, too, and maybe it just comes down to the way the K6 or K8, or the way those schools are built. I'm just knowing from what we're seeing in literacy and, and childhood development, and, and how important those early years are, being able to focus specifically on what those students need versus, and maybe that's just in the way the building is designed and thought through, and how the programming are, or whether, or whether that's two separate And then I think I had a final, I've lost track of myself here, but if I remember what my last one was, I will, I'll raise my hand again.
Ms., Mr. Jordan, and I, tell me when, when you need a hard stop, because I know you.
Oh, I, you all have been very accommodating.
Okay.
So I am, I am good to go.
All right.
Thank you very much.
I had to pick you up, Ms. Jordan, if you'll ever. Back to Ms. Stone on that one question, and, and just kind of came out of, so for clarity, or maybe that we're still getting to this, so when we talk about that final report potentially, is it ideally talking about new builds, or talking about configuration or a mixture?
It is going to be a mixture. So if you recall, in a, some of the recent presentations, sort of hypothesized what your district total capital, but, capital needs would be in the current situation, if you just did some, some reductions in, in schools, right? Kept your basic configuration reduced. You've got, what was it, almost half a billion in deferred maintenance? What would it be, what would that look like if you just kept the configuration impaired down, well, it'd go down a tick?
I know, you think about it. Can you restate how much that deferred maintenance is?
Half a billion with a B.
Okay, thank you.
No worries. Sometimes good to emphasize that. And growing, because buildings, buildings don't sleep. And so then the, the, another option was looking, well, what if we did a K8? Well, that costs come down a bit, but what we're doing is the balance of that cost changes from predominantly deferred maintenance to a lot of rebuilding. I'm sorry, it doesn't go down, it actually goes up in a K8, because you got to build a bunch of new buildings. So the, what we were, want to do and will do in this deliverable is, in those options, we're looking not just at, hey, you know, these different configurations, what do you think, but this is what they would, this is how they would best fit. So we'll work through that, what would be the capital implications for that? How much would that cost? How much would you need to reinvest? Because to do any of this well, without a capital budget, this is not going to happen.
Right.
You have to be able to re- Because to do any of this well without a capital budget, this is not going to happen.
Right.
You have to be able to reinvest significantly in your buildings. And that is going to be a conversation in the, at city level, right? Because you've got to look at, yes, we've got to tighten, we know we need to tighten belts on the operations to invest more in our kids, in our classrooms. Doing that without a capital budget is hamstringing you significantly and will significantly curtail what you can do.
Been a long time since I felt butterflies in my stomach. But I feel butterflies in my stomach, yes, I'm.
Should I be worried?
No, I don't know. No, I just, the conversation is causing me anxiety for whatever reason.
It's a safe place. It's okay.
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to, so to be just kind of honest about it, I'm, I'm really confused. I'm not real clear on what we're trying to achieve. One of the things that, that you highlighted in your presentation, in the last presentation, that kind of just hit me, the bullet where you say the pivoted strategy during the pandemic to focus on deferred maintenance. I don't think I was aware that we pivoted, pivoted from an educational planning perspective. So I think because I've been here so long, that the terminology gets confusing to me and the goals get confusing. So when Mr. Clanton was speaking, some of the things that he said resonated with me. And so you all know me, so I pulled up a presentation from 2014. And, and we had, as part of goals, strategies. We wanted to promote Norfolk Public Schools as the cornerstone of our community's wellbeing. We wanted to increase the number of families who choose Norfolk Public Schools. We also had, we will host environments in which all individuals feel safe and secure. And one of the strategies was establish an equitable and efficient system of school choice at each level. And, I know, that's what I'm saying. And so, so to me, that's what I thought we had been working on. And then I, and I think the, the facilities, master planning, alignment with the educational outcome goals, which I mentioned the last meeting, I just, I feel is, in my mind, is disconnected. Or if it is connected, I don't understand the connectivity. So I know a couple of years back, when Cooperative Strategies was working with Chesapeake, which has a different environment where they're growing. But I know that one of the things that you all started with was this conversation with stakeholders around the future of education in Chesapeake, something to that effect. Which to me made pretty good sense because it provided a framing, at least as I reviewed it and looked at it, I had no idea whatever happened to it, but at least as it started out, it was really around what is the community's vision for the future of education in their city? And I think that, and I think this is where Ms. Bessine was going. I think we've kind of lost what the community's vision is outside of what we tried to articulate in the, in the goals and the non-negotiables. I feel like right now we're kind of all over the place. You know, there's conversations perhaps on, there's a lot of conversation about rightsizing.
Yes.
Which we know we need to do.
Yep.
I don't know if there's been much quality conversation around what does that mean and what does that look like? Meaning in a larger sense. I think the board has to be clear on it. I think the board has to be clear with our community on what that, what that means. And I think that's an important step in the process that can then help inform and for us to be able to give clear direction for the internal conversation and work that you described that needs to take place. That's just kind of where my sense is. So I shared before that one of the districts that I know has been doing some things around rightsizing is San Antonio Independent School District. And so they, their board, you know, did a resolution around rightsizing.
Yep.
And then they described advantages to rightsizing. And I'm just going to read to you what they, what they had. Ensuring thriving schools, enhance safety and security on campuses, enhance social emotional resources, allow for teacher collaboration across same grade level, ensure each child receives equitable academic offerings, ensure equitable extracurricular activities across schools, determine the spaces where students succeed, better match number of buildings to enrollment. And I can read those and it just, I get it.
Yep.
And so I think for me, when what I'm, I feel like I'm immersed in is more technical language that, that then pulls me into the technical discussion. Where I feel like as a board, we need to be in a position where we can be clear with the community, with you, with the administration on what our overarching lofty, high expectations are for education in Norfolk moving forward. And that's when I hear educational planning and educational visioning, that's what resonates in my mind. And then where I hear facilities planning and these other pieces, they to me are the technical implementation and, and strategies around these overarching goals and, you know, the future of education in Norfolk Public Schools. And, and so I don't know where that fits on the timeline. You know, all of us are speaking. I think one of the reasons why I have butterflies because I think you get eight, nine different perspectives, which I don't think is good for where we're, where we say we want to be. I think we've got to be able to give some clear one voice expectations in alignment with our community goals so that the community is on board with us from the beginning. I think December is too late. And, and the last thing I'll say as I, before I forget it, you know, we, with the ed planning out of 20, you know, we did some good things, you know. We, I think half the board has their children at ADL, right? We've expanded some of our IB offerings. We've offered, there have been other things that have come along. We have Compass at Ruffner. We have, yeah, STEAM coming up at Booker T. We have, what do we call it at Lake Taylor?
Lake Taylor School.
Lake Taylor School, right. Well, I mean, the middle school, right. So, so to me, I think we have a lot of great things out there. But as part of this conversation, I think we need to say, you know, how does it all, what does it look like today? And then here and be able to have a conversation around what are we looking for tomorrow? And then being able to see the, any gaps that exist between where we are today and where we want to be tomorrow. And then those things get factored into rightsizing and capital budgets and operating budgets and programming and so forth. And I, I think that's what, what my stomach is saying to me is Rodney, you don't have, you don't understand the big picture anymore. And I think as a board member, I should understand the big picture. And I think the board as a whole with the superintendent should understand the big picture so that as we have future meetings, we're clear about what we're driving towards. And so I don't, I'm not real clear where that fits in the, in the timeline, but it doesn't scream out to me.
Okay, then that's on me. So, so let me, let me start. One thing I have noticed, if I may respond, is that list of parameters for rightsizing from San Antonio. One thing I have noticed in my time with y'all is that there is now consensus that this needs to be done. That rightsizing needs to be done and it needs to be done to promote equity and, and high quality education for all. Rightsizing and consolidations have not always been a consensus strategy. And so the attempt is how do we facilitate a process that builds that consensus on a, quite frankly, often contentious matter? To do that, we do absolutely need to be clear on what we're trying to achieve without, I'm going to use words to paraphrase, analysis paralysis. We don't want to just study data, study data, study data and not do anything, right? I agree, we have to engage the community on this. This list of parameters that you're talking about, San Antonio is a good example. Pittsburgh is starting down this path and their superintendent just released a document discussing likening this process to gardening and needing to find, how do I get the right amount of soil and sunlight and water? Because you get one of those elements away, you know, analogous to resources and facility conditions and adequacies, and the garden doesn't grow as well, right? So that, that's sort of what we want to get to. The reason for this approach, which is malleable, is that rightsizing is a necessity. That's a foregone. The means to do it, what are the means to do it? Shall we keep our configurations? You have, as presented in a previous presentation, more configurations than any other district in the state except for Fairfax. You're spread thin on your configurations. You're spread thin on your facilities and your buildings, you know, the resource thin. And how do we, how do we consolidate that down? So as I see it, part of rightsizing has to include a determination on what's our configuration moving forward. So I want to go directly to that. What is a configuration that fits for you all? I think what I can add is that as we get into this educational visioning and looking at what districts who have gone before you in this, should this kind of change have done, that, that is the area to be explicit on what these planning parameters have been for others and what they should be for you. And that before we get into developing the options that they are based on those parameters, that, to Ms. Bessine's comment earlier, should be in lockstep with your board goals and non-negotiables. And so I see, at this timeline is, my note Rodney, is to take in our case studies, of which San Antonio can be one, but others, of course, look not just what they had, what they did and how did it work for them, but what were the parameters that they had? What were the non-negotiables they had? What were the rules of the road for that transition that they used? Compile those and to see what is the right set of rules of the road for you all, for here in Norfolk. Have that be explicit. That, those are things that we can make also interim deliverables before options are blessed and so forth. The parameters to get them should be. And those should be made public so that you and the, and the community at all, at large can see what's the rubric that we're looking at. So I apologize for the confusion on that, but I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, and that's all these hands. I saw Stone first, Gabriel and Bessine.
I somewhat want to respond to Mr. Jordan, or at least maybe help some of what I'm hearing. I think, I, I see the, the focus confusion that you're talking about. I think it fits with some of the same things that I've said before too. So I absolutely get it. I think that those things, I think two things can happen at the same time, hand in hand. There are some things that can happen without needing a specific focus. We know that facilities and their, their condition is tied to student outcomes. We have the data to back that up. We have data to show us. We know that we're spending money on facilities that could actually be going into education, but we're spending it on facilities. So these are things that we know that are affecting what is happening with our students. And those are things that we can learn through data and through studies here. And that's somewhat the beginning where it's what data do we have and what does it tell us? And I think it would be premature to try to put parameters on it at that stage. Because if you try to put parameters on something that you don't know anything about, you put a focus that doesn't need to be there. We, we don't know what we don't know yet. So there might be data that tells us about certain configurations that work better, certain programs that might work better, certain things that might work that will come out of these studies and from positioning and the internal options that helps us. I think if, in the meantime, while that stuff is happening, we can definitely be working as a board to think through what, what do we know that the community is giving us feedback on? And with the combination of the data that comes back and the feedback that we get from the community, what does that mean is the best focus? And at that point, you're able to set some parameters on, these are the things that we want to focus on. And then we're able to make choices and work on steering committees and focus groups to see if we're focusing in the right areas. That way you get to a point where you're focusing, but you're not limiting the process when you're just kind of in fact gathering mode. If, please, yeah.
Yeah, just for, so I don't, I hope I didn't say anything that was suggesting not moving forward.
No, no, I didn't take it that way.
I think what, what, so I agree with what you're saying, but I also think that our, our experiences are a little, are different.
Oh, for sure.
So, so I think one of the reasons that we have all these multiple configurations is because we haven't completed anything. We get, we get started. So we've had, we had conversations on K5s, K6s, K8s, 38s, K2s. We had all those conversations. I mean, I still got scars from many of those conversations. So, so for me, I, I bring whether it's an asset or whether it's a deficit, I bring that to the table. So what we, what I was, I don't disagree with anything that you said. I'm just saying that if there is a place, and I think there should be a place somewhere, where as a board, we go to our community and say, we've, we've adopted goals, we have non-negotiables, we have a strategic plan, we need to rightsize. And we want the community to be prepared for the fact that the board is going to, is authorizing the administration to move forward with a rightsizing activity that's going to involve, as he said, a lot of tough decisions, a lot of big moves, money, whatever it is. It's going to, it's going to be a big and significant impact on the community and education as we know it today. And we want you as a community, we want, we need your back because we can't do it without that.
We need you to come along with us.
We want you with us in doing this because, you know, it was described as parameters, I don't, I mean, however you want to describe it. But we want you to do this because.
I got you.
We want our, we need to have the best options for our children. We want to meet your desires for choice. We want to make sure we don't have long-term subs. We want, you know, to be able to speak in positive asset-based language while we are asking the community to come along with us on this journey. And here are our checkpoints along the way so that we are building faith and trust with the community that right now may not have full faith and trust in what we're doing. That's all I'm saying. It's got to be something that galvanizes what we're doing so that the community can either say, I'm with you, or the community might say to us, absolutely not. But I think they will come along with us. But I think we have a job of going out and being clear on what we're doing and why we're doing it and the outcomes that we're trying to achieve. Otherwise, I think we will end up where we have often ended up is when it comes time to make those decisions. You know, Dr. Burson's heard me say this many times, you know, we, the heat comes and it's hard to take that heat. But I think if we can rebuild some community goodwill and ownership. But I think if we can rebuild some community goodwill and ownership in what we're doing now, I think it will save us time, energy, and money later. That's what I'm trying to articulate.
And I think that wraps up my point, if I could finish what he was responding to.
Dr. Gabriel, are you okay with that?
Okay. I think that, I get all of that, and I think that gives us the opportunity to think about very specifically what we want to do in the retreat. And we can even talk about what we want to happen before the retreat and what conversations we want to have. And this is a suggestion, not really a question yet, because I can't make that decision for the board, but I wonder if there is another way to put it, at least to check in with the board before December. I'm not sure where it would fit in, just so we can bring the input that we have so that we're not getting all the way to December and we've gone too far off.
If I may, ma'am.
Yeah, sure.
That's exactly what I was just thinking, is that we could come at the end of our initial visioning work here with leadership. You all have had your board retreat. Immediately, the scope, the sequence here is we receive those non-negotiables, we've done the work with the staff, we marry those up, we take out things that don't fit, and then present that to you at the start of the school year.
So August?
August, August, September, in that timeframe.
August, okay.
For Dr. Gabriel, August.
We can do that.
But that's what we at the board also has to do between now and then.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
And we can do it.
I feel like I support what it is, but I just think we just need to be clear. So I'm hearing more work on the goals.
It's not.
I don't really understand what more work we have to do on the goals.
It's not, no, 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 no. And that's being.
And that's where I'm trying to go.
Communication.
Yeah. It's communicating out what we've done already. Yeah.
But I'm just really, like, you mentioned 2014. None of those things are telling me, other than now we've added on some other component about the social, emotional stuff. That the community, because I was part of those conversations, and say that we are, so it's just, I'm just like, can we make clear if we're saying, because I know you're saying coming back, are we doing something as a board in tandem with this process? That's what I, I'm confused.
That's where you're confused.
I'm sorry.
Dr. Gabriel?
Right, I would like to have a clear understanding as to what that is, and I definitely would like to hear from the administration on, you know, what they're, what they're hearing from us as far as what these next steps are.
Well, that was what I was prepared to say.
But for me, it is really clear, we have a strategic plan. We have a strategic plan, and when I talk to individuals, this is our layout, this is our roadmap. And the strategic plan is based off of evidence, based off of our data, based off of lots of different things. And then from the strategic plan, the board has then hyper-focused on some very pinpoint aspects, literacy, some demographic data, school accreditation. And so to me, that's how I have made sense of it, and that's how I deliver it to the public, and it's very digestible for them. The educational planning fits into, how do we, how does this fit into that strategic plan? How does that fit into those board goals? And all I'm saying is time, time, time. Because the more time that we are contemplating and pontificating and trying to do all this, which is important, it is very important, we are, we're losing that time, and I don't want to rush through a thing and not have a very good product, but if we don't get this ball going now, our community has been with us since 2013. Some of them are tired of the discussions. They want action. And our kids need to have that. And every year that goes by, our buildings are getting older and older and older. Our average age for our buildings is over 30 years old. Is that correct, Mr. Frey, or Dr. Burson? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The average age of our school building, 30 years plus?
Thirty, thirty.
More than more.
Kind of put that up.
More than that.
Times that.
Probably closer to fifty, fifty or sixty.
Okay, so it's, and, and, you know, the infrastructure, what that means to us is dollars in maintenance, dollars in maintenance. And I think staff, staff can take but so much, and kids can take but so much, but in order to give clear direction and so that we know what the next steps are, I personally am in support of trying to accelerate the process. I really do appreciate all the comments from my colleagues. And I don't need any, for me, I guess getting the information out to the public on what the board goals are, for me, I don't need any extra for that. I feel like I know what I need to do for that. But I would need to know from Dr. Burson and her staff what their takeaway is from this conversation and where we're coming together as what those next steps are.
So if I may, it's really kind of not clear, because, you know, some board members are saying one thing, some other board members are saying something else. I guess where it gets a little confusing for me is, I feel like we have direction in the school division. We've worked on the strategic plan for a very, very long time. We have a very rigorous, very focused strategic plan that the administration has been working to accomplish the goals of that. So I know we have goals and objectives. Also know that the school board has spent time on developing goals as well. We have those five goals with, you know, number five, we agreed, cleared that up in January, what that would look like. So we have the board's goals, and there are non-negotiables for me that the board gave to me, and non-negotiables for the school board that have been established. So I really don't understand what else is needed for us to move forward with this. We understand, and of course, we're flexible in terms of the timeline. We get it, we want to take action, we certainly do. And it feels like some board members may need a little more time, some want this to occur more quickly. We're ready, we're ready to move forward, but we also know we have to engage our community. Otherwise, our plans will fail. So whatever we do, and if it's, a decision is made to accelerate the process, we need to make sure that there are opportunities for our community members to be meaningfully engaged in the process and to be a part of the process. So I'm really not sure what other work the board needs to do, but I do like, I'm hearing that board members feel that they need to be within the community, perhaps providing some, you know, to galvanize the troops, get everyone together, ready for war, Mr. Jordan? It won't be war.
Oh.
We need to get our troops together to talk about what it is that we'd like to go, the vision for the school division. This is the direction we're thinking about going, but certainly we don't want to go there without you. We need your input, we need your feedback, we need you right by our sides. I agree with all of that.
Yes.
So for me, we're fine with either way, we just want to continue to proceed, because I think we've had many, many discussions, and we're ready to move forward. But I do think perhaps August might be a little lofty as a goal, because we're coming from the summer, and I know community, you know, that they may or may not want to engage throughout the summer, maybe, maybe not. So we'll see, and we're starting school earlier this year, and we also have a board meeting on the 5th, I believe, and the first day of school is the 7th. So you need to keep all of those dates in mind when you think about adding something else to the agenda.
Okay, so the time now is 5:18. I'm going to give Clanton and Basine.
Teachers come back, yeah. So we're open for business.
Teachers come back on the 7th.
Yes, we're open for business on the 7th.
But not the students, because I almost.
Yes.
So I'll give quickly Clanton and Basine, but what I'm hearing from Dr. Burson, that she needs clear direction on what this board wants to do as far as the timeline and engagement as it relates to the facilities and outcome. So I'm going to, Mr. Clanton, if you could.
I think this is right in, this is the timeline.
Okay, right, well.
So my thing is, I just wanted to hear from Dr. Burson, that this is what you and the administration are supporting.
Yes, we have discussed it, we've had meetings about it, we are on board with the plan.
So this is a recommendation from the administration to us? And so, Madam Chair, in respect, I'm hearing that we would like some board engagement, and so maybe in that, we put, where the board can engage with you all and the community in that, and I think that we can kill two birds with one stone in that respect. If this is what you're saying, it's the timeline. I know we have speeding, but you said that you would like to stay with this one, and if the board can be involved in this, in that respect of the communication and helping the community come along, is that maybe a possible win-win? I don't know, I'm just putting an idea out there to keep us potentially moving forward.
Ms. Basine? Well, I think that's, that's what I am thinking. I mean, that's what I, and I wanted to be sure, because like now, I'm the one with butterflies in my stomach, because I don't want to go down a path of creating more confusion. But, you know, I think Dr. Burson said it, we're not trying to put more work on the administration, this is for the board to be out in the community, not for, I'm going to be clear, not, I wasn't saying, you know, administration is out.
In the timeline.
But in this timeline, the educational visioning, the, this is, the board is going out, doing community listening sessions around the already established board goals, non-negotiables. And that is what we are, are going out to listen to the community around and to, you know, talk to them about what we're going to be engaging in for the next 18 months so that we can bring them along with us. And yes, they've been along with us for the last decade or so that we've been doing this work, but we have new people in this city, we have new parents, we have new, you know, we have a lot of energy, and this is where we are right now. And so, you know.
Okay. So what I'm hearing, I want to kind of go quickly around, because I do want to give clear direction to Dr. Burson and her administration. So quickly, I want to make sure that this timeline, but incorporating some, some school board listening sessions incorporated in this timeline, is that what I'm hearing around our, to engage?
Yeah, but I just, the word synergy.
Synergy, okay.
I don't want conflicting messages, because I don't think the community wants another listening learning session and no action. I think the community wants listening and learning, followed with, now this is where we're going, and this is why you're here. Maybe the board opens it up, and we give that and set the stage, and then you take them through, this is what we're, in order to meet the things that we're showing you with the board goals and objectives, here's your section, and here's your opportunity to be engaged and provide feedback and to help us as we move along this timeline to get to a result. I think if we go out as a separate and the board just going to have another, this is the board goals, vision stuff, and no follow-up, or a separation and no synergy in there, I think that's where the confusion is going to come, and I think that that's where we get into that, the wheels falling off the thing. I think if we can keep that word synergy, and how we can work together with our consultants, administration, and the board being a part of that and being the community voice, I think that would give, and that's my piece, and I almost said enough.
So can we agree, again, because we want to give some direction today, can we agree to that? No?
But I guess I'm, what I'm getting confused about is the direction.
Well, that's my question.
Burson, I mean, this is, we're just talking about what we're going to do.
Right.
So that's not in direction to her.
So Dr. Burson, can I?
That's where I'm going back. I feel as though what we're going to do needs to be in tandem as a governance team, school administration, working with the administration in this process.
Right.
I think that if we're going to have community conversations, I agree with you, let's go ahead, you know, highlight with the, set the stage with the strategic plan. Right, these are the goals, these are parameters, set that conversation, hey, and this is what our next steps, in order to get there, and this is a process that we want you to be here involved. And I think if we're doing that together, it shows unity to the community amongst the governance team.
I agree with that.
And that we're behind the strategic plan, and this is the action that we're trying to get towards.
I agree with that.
Okay, with all that said, again.
I thought I was going to be quiet, but that's my piece.
So we have a timeline presented to us today. Dr. Burson, correct me if I'm wrong, you and the administration agree with the timeline?
We do, we work with Mr. Sturz on the timeline.
Okay. So with that said, I need board members to give some direction, because again, we want to get moving. So I'm going to quickly go around and just, and just ask, are you in agreement with the timeline that has been presented to us? Dr. Gabriel?
I accept the timeline, if there's opportunity for acceleration down the road, I'm all for it.
Understood.
Ms. Basine? I accept the timeline, if and only if, that it begins with our, being very clear about our board non-negotiables driving, driving the timeline. Ms. Stone?
Timeline looks great to me, I have no problems with that, with the only hope that we can fit in a board check-in, maybe it's more appropriate after internal options within like October timeframe, whatever seems appropriate to you and to the administration and what seems to agree with the process, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Ms. Stone about the monitoring, just like we were doing with everything else, that we need to have regular check-ins. I think the timeline is reasonable, and I think that we all need to be fully committed to keeping with it, obviously, you know, without any unknowns happening, but this needs to be done very swiftly. And the focus groups, sorry, can I talk about focus, just, we always get caught up on the focus groups, I mean, we really need to come up with a comprehensive, a way to get a more comprehensive representation of our city.
Yes, I agree with that. Mr. Clanton?
I agree with everything my colleague said, Ms. Basine, I agree, synergy in that, leading off of that conversation, and the check-in. So I, timeline's good with me, and I think if the board takes that lead on that conversation piece and the check-in, I'm good.
Mr. Jordan?
No, because my butterflies are still there, and largely, I didn't come prepared today with the idea of giving direction on the timeline. I treated this as a work session, discussion, and learning, and my brain process has to be able to digest all that I've heard and then think about it and then come back. I think that's why we have work sessions and why we have another meeting in a couple of weeks. So looking at the timeline, we've had a lot of discussion, I'm not sure of the, what the modifications are, and if there are any modifications, I would like to see those and understand how they, how they fit. I need to, so I'm not ready for that yet. I mean, I don't have any objection to it on the surface, but I think that there are other pieces that we talked about today, and I also worry that, even as we are talking about the retreat and the impact that this will have on the retreat, I'm worried that our student outcome focus is going to get, that this needs to be integrated into the board's larger cadence of work. And right now, I don't, I don't think we're good with our current cadence, and I just want to make sure that what we don't find out is, based upon our student outcome work, then we get to the summer, and then the administration has this and that and the other, and starting school early, and then we end up being overwhelmed. I think we really need to make sure that if we're doing this, that what other things are we letting go? And I'm not sure I have a good sense of that yet.
Okay. So with all that said, did you?
Just make sure we get it up, based on that, Ms. Buffalo, I want to, can we, I think what I'm hearing is if we can at least get a clean new document based on everything we said to come back.
Everything that was said, yeah.
Yep.
And then, well, and what I'm also hearing, too, is to vote that this is the direction?
Yep.
No, well, not vote, I'm sorry, I'm taking, but just in a, something solidified that lays it out what we talked about, the check-in and the non-negotiable, make sure this process is kind of built around our non-negotiable goals and strategic plan, and something tangible that we, we say this is, this is what we agree upon. But we do agree that we, the timeline, but there are some things that we want to see as far, as part of this process. Is that what?
as part of this process. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
The only thing that I have heard is the check-ins with the, with the board, as far as the timeline process, as to what physically might go in. And that might just be one at October.
Oh, yeah. Because I think you said October.
Well, if, if I may, Madam Chair, I've taken some notes on things that I'd like to parrot back for clarity.
Oh, sure. That's, okay.
That what I pledged to, and will, will work through, work with, is, one, that we will include board check-ins in, in these phases. And I'll look at that as a plural, and work on that, so that we can group some efforts, so that we can stick with the timelines, with the scope, and still be here to provide you check-ins. So I will, I will look at that. I'll look at how we can do that towards the end of the summer, and then mid-process. Two, that I'm going to look at if there are options, per Dr. Gabriel's comments, to accelerate some engagements on this, and what that would look like. So what would be some options to, if we get a little bit further ahead on some of this work, how can we repurpose, perhaps, some timeline to, to accelerate some engagements in coordination with you all? That's one of the third bullets, is to coordinate this work, efforts with your check-in, with your engagements. I know that doesn't have to be hand and glove necessarily, but in, perhaps it's, it's physically present, perhaps it's not, but at least be aware and, and make sure that the documents that we're working with are, you're aware of them going out into the public. And that can be, in part, facilitated through these check-ins, as a, as a means to coordinate. Two, when we develop the focus groups, in the, in the last part of our engagements here, to focus on that representativeness, needs to, to be a focus. And lastly, that, yeah, we just need to coordinate the entire schedule with the board and your entire, and your engagements, so that it is cohesive. So, quick bullet points, we're going to include options to, to perhaps fast-forward some community engagements through purpose scope, if that becomes possible. Two, we will include board check-ins in these phases. Three, we will lead with the board goals, strategic plan, and non-negotiables. It's the key framing element of developing these options, and adjudicating them to create our recommendations. Four, we will work intently with the leadership to make sure our focus groups are representative. And lastly, along the way, do our best to make sure that we are coordinating our deliverables and our communications, such that it's something that you can use and not stumble over when you're working with the community on your own.
What was the first one again?
That we'll include a option, I'm going to work through an option here. So if we get to the middle of a phase and realize that, this sometimes happens, where like, we're going to look at three or four different options, and we get done, and the group goes, yeah, there's only really one, or two. Like, we, we know, like, what needs to be done at this point. We could then perhaps look at a trigger point to say, okay, well, we're going to stop doing this phase, which we did quicker than we budgeted for. So now we can start to pull in, pull up some engagements in a, in a way. So we'll, we'll set a trigger mechanism for that, to, not say that it definitely will be used, but at least have an option there to accelerate if.
When appropriate.
If appropriate. Yes, ma'am.
Did everyone get that?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Just, just not, just another thought that just popped into my head. In doing this work, if there's anything that is considered sacred and not touchable, I think we should know what those are upfront. I mean, just, if there's certain, if there's certain things that we know we won't touch, can't touch, shall not touch, I think we need to have a sense, I don't know what they are. It used to be Maury, you know, it's not that anymore.
I agree. I agree. We would like that. We'd love that.
If there's some things that we.
Sacred cow, appropriate.
Yes, yes.
That, that we're not willing to touch, then we should say that. Otherwise, again, I think we need to be clear with each other and with the community, everything is on the table for the benefit of students.
Yes, sir.
And if we're, and if we're not willing to do that, then, and I think that goes
back to what Ms. Bassin was saying about where those non-negotiables fit. So if there's anything that, you know, it used to be, you know, we weren't going to further concentrate poverty. If that's a non-negotiable, then we need to be clear about it. But I just, I just know from this and watching what others have gone through, if we aren't clear, then we're just pontificating.
Right. For the benefit of questions from the community, in the past, we had discussed Granby Elementary, J Cox, and Norview Elementary as potential new builds. At this point in time, Dr. Birdsong, is it fair to say that that is, where are we with that?
The last, yeah.
The plan is still there.
The plan is still there, in accordance with the direction from the board. The board has not said, don't move forward with that plan. Don't, you can work with the city on that plan. So if that is, if that is the new reality, then we.
Yeah. It's, it's, with that in mind, I went and pulled up the City of Norfolk's MPS Capital Improvement Plan. And they have listed Norview Elementary, but it's not Alec.
Twenty twenty-nine?
Twenty twenty-nine, one million.
I'll listen.
Yeah, for the design plan. So I don't, there's no J Cox listed, or?
That's my point.
That's, but that goes into the bigger question that I've been doing, my research and looking in, because we approved the capital improvement fund, but as we know, this board has no funding authority, other than to put it.
Right.
For the plan. But my, because it's been said out there in the community, that council has given us the money, we got the money for, for these schools. And I'm like, well, why can't we, we're doing Maury, why are we not doing J Cox? And that's because there was a, it was supposed to be bonds, and didn't happen to be bonds. And then I think that, that money may have been rolled up into maybe a certain entity that's non-existent right now for funding, is to pay for it. But it's not there, the money's not there. We get money annually, and that's what you're seeing in that budget.
Which, which goes back to my comment earlier about why we need to have a stakeholder meeting first, about the future of public education in North Public Schools. Because if, if we have a plan, and we think that we have submitted a plan, that we thought certain things were going to occur, and they aren't occurring, then that's something we have to deal with. We can't just operate in a vacuum. So I'm glad Ms. Buffalo read that, because I was going to bring that up too.
It's in our budget too.
No, I'm not, what's on paper is one thing. What, what people have the will and are committed to is another. So I agree with you. We put forward a capital improvement plan, but the budget documents don't seem to align with what we thought. And we need to be clear on that, on where we are, and where our partners are, or if other sources of funding need to be available.
What was that number again? You said what, billion?
Half a billion.
Half a billion. Okay. All right. So we're going to put a pin in this, five thirty-eight.
It was good. Good discussion.
But Ms. Bassin words, didn't, okay. So again, we're going to agree to what you have shared with us, if we can get that all.
Yes, ma'am.
Piped up and writing for us, that'd be great as well, out to the board, and how we're going to move forward.
So when would you like this document?
Before.
Two weeks?
Yeah, I was getting ready to say by the next board meeting.
Okay, by the business meeting?
Yeah. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you all for your feedback.
Oh, thank you. Whew. Okay, board members, great discussion. So we're going to move on to two point zero two. Dr. Birdsong?
Yes. I see Dr. Poe approaching the podium, so Dr., without his power tap. But Dr. Poe is going to lead a discussion around the school board goals. So thank you, Dr. Poe.
Thank you. All right. I got it. Thanks, Ms. Stone. All right. First, we're going to look at school board goal three with two measures. Measure three point one, as a reminder, the goal is the percentage of students in the black subgroup reading on or above grade level, as measured by the SOL reading test, will increase from forty-three percent during school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, which was accreditation year twenty-one, twenty-two, to at least seventy-five percent during school year twenty-six, twenty-seven, or accreditation year twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And to do this, the first measure that we're looking at, interim measure for this year, is the percentage of students in the black subgroup scoring proficient, which is the at or above or on watch category on the spring star reading assessment, will increase from forty-one percent in the spring of SY twenty-two, twenty-three, to forty-nine percent in the spring of twenty-three, twenty-four. So the data presented on the chart, the red line on the line graph is the target data, and the blue line is the actual data. And what you can see here is the star reading score for students in the black subgroup, it improved from the fall by four percent. However, it's still two point four percent below the target. And as seen in the line graph, though, the trajectory is following the target trajectory. So we are growing at the rate that we anticipated to grow, but just a little bit below the percentage. So also important to note is the current proficiency rate is higher than last spring's rate at our winter level already. So we're ahead of where we were when we ended the year last year for this data point already at the winter point. So that's promising for the end of the year. So although the performance of the students in the black subgroup on star reading is improving from fall to spring, it's still below the target set for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And the winter results for students in the black subgroup is slightly above the spring results for the prior school year. Given the spring results are typically higher than the winter, performance by the spring should be stronger than the previous year. So overall, what is going well, movement between the fall and winter star results for students in the black subgroup is moving in the right direction for the targets. For example, the change from the fall to winter targets for proficiency is four percent, and the results increased is nearly four percent as well. So like I said earlier, the lines are running parallel. We're just a little bit off our mark. And twenty-two of the thirty-seven schools exceeded the winter target for the black student subgroup proficiency, of which seven schools exceeded the target by at least twenty percent. And the actual schools are listed here on the report. I'm not going to read them all out to you guys for the sake of time. And what's not going well, following a similar trend, similar trend is for the fall and winter, the performance of students of black subgroup on third grade star reading may not meet the targets for the spring administration. However, they should exceed where we were last year. And the shortfall is likely to be around two point five percent is what we're estimating right now. And students in the black subgroup had a lower performance on winter star reading for students in the all, then students in the all-student subgroup. The all-student subgroup had a proficiency rate of fifty-one percent, so there was nearly a ten percent gap. And twelve of our schools were below the target. So because of this data, what are we doing? What are the next steps? So in curriculum instruction, the English office developed instructional roadmaps for teachers in grades five and eight, because those were some of our struggling grades, to support current unit planning and instruction, leading up to the new integrated reading and writing assessments, and to serve as additional models of evidence-based reading and writing instruction. And the English office also collaborated with various instructional staff members, including reading specialists, to analyze division and school-level data. And then the reading specialists, of course, went down to the classroom-level data, to identify priority SOL strands, and to plan for interventions. The reading specialist and instructional coaches are leading similar sessions at grade and teacher levels, to ensure the right instruction to the right students at the right time. And the English office continues to provide professional development for teachers and building-level administrators focusing on allied tier-one instruction, student engagement, and most importantly, small group instruction, that's based on data. And coaching and monitoring of tutors' implementation of evidence-based literacy practices. This would be with our UI and tutors, also our PALS tutors for the younger students. Increasing the number of students receiving one-on-one tutoring using data-driven foundational reading skills curriculum. Increase opportunities for all instructional staff to engage in data coaching, training utilizing Lexia Core Five and Power Up, that's our elementary and middle school levels, and the all-in tutoring resources. Increase the intensity of data-driven, teacher-led small groups, utilizing the Lexia evidence-based literacy intervention resources. And increase the instructional walkthroughs focused on monitoring implementation of the high-intensity tutoring model. So all these are, are different facets of what we're doing. And as we discussed last time that we did a monitoring report, you know, as we move forward, we'll talk about these specific points in the future. But since this is the first time we've kind of gone over it with this format, we're not quite to that point yet. So I'll stop here at this one, because I know we have four on the plate for tonight.
Okay, board members, you've heard presentation. Ms. Bassin, you have a question?
Yeah, and thank you, Dr. Poe. So my comments are similar to, you know, the comments that, from our previous progress monitoring, and to deepen my understanding about, you know, the progress that our students in the black subgroup are making. You know, I know we're trending in the right direction, but not quite meeting the target. So, so something is working well, some strategies are working well, to help our students move in that direction. Can you speak to what those specific strategies are that are working well, and then when we talk about which ones were not working as well, or that, you know, or maybe not working well for a certain subgroup within that subgroup of students, you know, and then in terms of the next steps, you know, and I know you're probably already thinking about this, because we talked about this before, and I know you, you're always a step ahead of us in that thought process. But connecting, you know, the next report, so these next steps, you know, which includes some great promising strategies here, you know, I'd like to see how, how each of the strategies, you know, contribute toward moving the needle, like how we're making progress, and how you know that, so that when it does come time to resource allocation, and, or even change, you know, if you need to pivot, and you come to us and say, you know, we know exactly why. But anyway, to go, to go back to the strategies that are working well, that aren't working well, if you could speak to that, that'd be helpful.
Okay, so the, it's pretty broad. And I think it's from classroom to classroom, on what's working better and what's not working better. As time has progressed, the integration of Lexia has become stronger and stronger. And not only the integration, but the use of the data has become stronger and stronger in the classroom. The coaching through the data, and how to use that in the classroom, and how to drive small group instruction, we're seeing that to start to strengthen more and more as we go through the year, and especially like at the middle school level. That's, that's the bigger challenge. Once you get to secondary, you know, breaking that old sage-on-the-stage model, and going into the small-group, data-intensive instructional model, is, is a big step and a big change. So you'll see on the, the list of, of the what's next, those are, those are best practices. Those are researched, those are evidence-based, best practices that, that we're putting into place. And some of them, when you talk about small group, are hard to measure, per se, exactly what's going on beyond the, the classroom observation, and saying, oh, we see small-group instruction, and how is the performance of those students compared to where we don't see it? I think it's, it's more right now, the balance of what we're seeing versus not seeing, instead of practice to practice, if that makes sense. And it's also still the balance of what we're seeing in a classroom of a certified teacher, and a long-term sub. So it, it's less about each individual practice, and more about holistically, about how are we seeing it across classrooms? I, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. And I'm trying very hard not to start diving into these, the schools that are listed here, and, you know, so that we don't get into. But, you know, I, I do under, you know, I see a pattern that I know is a staffing challenge that is probably also playing a role in, in.
One of the things we do to circumvent that too, is we, we also tier our support in curriculum instruction. We, I've said this before, Dr. Kimsey and I are pretty much attached to the hip, and our, our teams meet on a regular basis, and we talk about, you know, forty-five day plans, and where are we sending the folks, and how are we redistributing our resources equitably, not equally, but equitably across our schools, which we've talked about before. Last spring, we talked about it too. And, and that's a key component to what's going on. And then we also continuously look at what is out there and offered. So previously, the state, when they brought in the all-in plan, they had started with a, a reading program called Ignite. And then Ignite said that, we're not really that broad of what you're talking about. So then the state went to Lexia, which fortunately, we were already using, and that's their evidence-based software they pulled on. So I felt, I felt good that we had chosen before the state. But the nice thing is with. But the nice thing is with Ignite, and Ms. Nash is actually here, I went right to Ms. Nash and said, Ms. Nash, grab as many licenses as we're allowed to have. So, I think we have about four-hundred-and-ten?
Over five.
Over five-hundred licenses now that we were able to get that the state is paying for. And that software is fifteen minutes a day, one-on-one instruction for our students. So, we've also added that component and it was, we're not even on this list yet because it's just that, as fresh as it is, that we're just doing the professional development with our reading specialists right now to make sure that they're putting the right students in front of that device and that we're consistent with that. So, doing every single thing we can in our hands to really equitably give our students supports.
And this is Ignite you're talking about?
That's Ignite, which came out originally, but then it couldn't be statewide.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other hands? I guess you can, oh, Mr. Jordan?
Yes. I'm trying to pose my question appropriately. Are there any things that you've found that we're doing differently this year than we did last year?
I think we are using the data at hand better to drive small group instruction. And I think that's why across the board, even though when you see the gap data, we're not making gains in our gaps per se, but we're still making gains in almost every single subgroup, where almost every single subgroup is ahead of where they are in the winter of where they were last spring. So, I would say our data focus and our knowledge of how to use Lexia better as an instructional tool and utilizing our UI instructors for one-on-one and small group consistently is where we're seeing the biggest difference this year.
I know, overall, around the big goal, you know, is this, ultimately, what we're saying is that the star data, we still believe aligns or gives us indication of how we'll perform on the reading SOL test, correct?
There's a strong correlation between star data and the success on the SOL test. Yes, sir.
So, I know that we're currently looking at this one-year cycle, but the overarching goal has a longer cycle where we eventually reach seventy-five percent. Can you just remind me which year it is that we would, that we're anticipating an accelerated jump forward? It's like we're, like, the goal starts at forty-three percent to get to seventy-five percent over a five-year period. Where in the current year, we show that we're slightly behind in the current year in terms of the proficiency on the star reading. But I take it if we were looking at your five-year target, there's some?
So, we really anticipated more of a steady growth line with our reading, Mr. Jordan, not a specific year where we see a jump. However, I do anticipate, based off our PALS data that we shared, that next year we'll start to see the jump in our third-grade scores. Because for a couple of years consistently now, we've seen those students from first to second grade grow. So, I anticipate seeing that in third grade next year and then to continually grow up from there.
And I know the goal itself nor the goal and the interims don't speak to school by school, but I know you're providing us school by school. What is it that you want us to take from the school by school?
What I want you, the board and the community, to take is the understanding that we are tiering our approach and that we have a strong understanding of what schools need our support more than other schools. And that's what the data is showing us. And that's the only reason I share it on this report. I realize I stopped giving you the data school by school. I'm just listing which schools. I stopped giving you the twenty pages and got it down to the five. But I think there's important for the community, though, too, this is where we're really focusing and where we know we have to focus on our reading for our students in the black subgroup.
And then I know the, well, help me, the window for the next round of star assessments is the end of this month, correct?
Correct, before SOL testing.
And then the SOLs start in May. And then our next cycle for an update basically will be, I guess, when we get to May-June, in essence, we will be receiving star information and SOL information at the same time. Is that about right?
Yeah, because those really roll in pretty straightforward. I think last year, we did it during the July meeting.
Right.
So, that we had solid data. We did the state of the school.
Right.
And here, we could just do the state of the board goals, you know, at the same time. Where it might be lengthy, but that's something we could possibly do at the retreat.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Any other questions with this? All right, Dr. Poehl?
All right, three-point-two. So, I'll try to be a little briefer on this one, just again, for the sake of time. This is the second measure for the same goal, so I'm not going to read the goal out again. And this measure focuses on our, the decreasing of the urgent intervention level. So, decreasing from thirty-nine-point-one percent from the spring of twenty-two, twenty-three to thirty-four percent in the spring of twenty-three, twenty-four. And as you'll see on the screen, very similar, we are just around that mark, following the same trajectory, but we're about two, one-point-eight percent away from the target score from where we had projected to be at this point. So, we're pretty close, but again, if you look at the winter target of thirty-seven and the actual data of thirty-nine-point-two, in the spring, we were at thirty-nine-point-one. So, we're almost at the spring score already for winter for urgent intervention. And again, these are the students we're focusing on more with that one-on-one and more with the high-intense tutoring to make sure that they have everything they need to read, because if we don't focus on that now, we lose those students long-term. So, what does the data show us? Although students in the black subgroup's performance on stars improving from fall to spring, it again, it's still below the twenty-three, twenty-four school year in our target. And the winter results are equivalent to the spring results for the prior school year, pretty much. Given the spring results are typically higher than winter, that it's showing promising for the spring, that we're on a good trajectory again. So, what's going well within the data, it's seen within the students in the black subgroup showed a decrease of nearly three percent for urgent intervention, which is the expected decrease from the target from the fall to winter. Again, we're following the line parallel. And twenty-three of our thirty-seven schools met the administration target for urgent intervention with students in the black subgroup. And then what's not going well? The students in the black subgroup had a rate of thirty-nine-point-two percent in the urgent intervention range, while students in the all-students group was thirty-two-point-four. So, there's about a seven percent gap there between our students in the black subgroup to the all-students subgroup. And four schools have at least fifty percent of the students within the black subgroup in the urgent intervention category for the winter intervention. So, we know we need to focus highly and give a tremendous amount of support to those schools. And then fourteen schools were still above the urgent intervention target, which is not where we want to be. And so, next steps, somewhat similar, but the targeting coaching support through team teaching and modeling of evidence-based literacy practices, coaching and monitoring of tutors' implementation of the evidence-based literacy practices, especially for those one-on-one tutoring sessions. And again, just like I said, increasing the number of students receiving one-on-one tutoring using the data-driven foundational reading skills curriculum that we have in place. And then increase opportunities for all instructional staff to engage in the data coaching. Increase the intensity of data-driven teacher-led small groups and increase instructional walkthroughs to monitor that this work is being done.
You heard this second report, Ms. Bassin?
Thank you. And I wanted to reiterate, obviously, my comments from before, but also, I wanted to mention this, is it possible to include the ends for, in the reports as well?
So, beyond the percents, do you want the number of tested as well?
Yeah, just so that we can kind of follow, like, you know, how many participated in the test. And I particularly like looking ahead at, you know, when we talk about goal four, too, I feel like that will be especially valuable, so.
If that's in agreement with the board?
Yeah.
Participation rate?
Well, not, I mean, just to have the end along with the percentage.
Okay.
So, how many students are represented in each one? So, just add one down there, under the actual data.
Yeah.
We have the data.
You have it, yeah, you have to have it.
It's fine with me.
Are we in agreement?
Could I ask a question? What is it that it's going to tell you?
Well, because it could tell you that there could be a drastic difference, like year over time in terms of whether you actually have the same kids who are being tested. Like, there could be a change in participation in the testing. Does that make sense, like?
Will the end tell us that?
What's that?
Will the number of students tested necessarily tell us that it's the same students? It's just telling us?
Yeah, it's just telling you the number of students.
It's just telling you the number of students.
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to get you to help me understand what it would.
But it could tell you, I'm just saying, if there was like an overall enrollment, like, you know.
But wouldn't we want the number to decline because we want to get more kids out of urgent intervention?
Yeah.
So, we're seeing that number go down over time.
Right.
But I want to warn you, though, with declining enrollment, you don't want to take, that's why the percentage is stronger, because with declining enrollment.
Well, I'm not saying replace it. I'm saying to include it with the percentage, because the percentage tells you what the percentage obviously is. I mean, that's just my.
I think looking ahead in the gap data, I definitely see, because you'll have some that.
That's really where I see the value of it.
Right.
Right, that's really where I see the value in it. But I was, you know, just going back to, I don't know, for consistency purposes, if it's easier for you to have it here. But the greatest value I see is with the gap data, but, you know, I can defer to the board, but that's just me, you know. Related to this particular interim, the other, the other thing, so these next steps, these are the highest leverage strategies that your team feels is?
This one particularly right here, increasing the number of students receiving one-on-one tutoring, is absolutely the highest leveraging strategy that we can put into place. The issue comes to play having the amount of people. You know, even though we've funded for, let's just say, two-hundred-and-fifty university instructors, we still don't have two-hundred-and-fifty university instructors. We're having the same staffing, you know, staffing issues with every area that we have. So, getting to that is more difficult, which is why we started to utilize the Ignite software I talked about, where that's an online program, but it's face-to-face, fifteen minutes. We're trying to look at other interventions that help us get to that level.
Okay.
But yes, these are, when we look at best practices, it's focusing on the data, using the data to drive your instruction, using the data to create your proper small group instructions, getting as much one-on-one and small group tutoring that you can with our struggling readers is absolutely the best way.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I was going to add something similar, and maybe it's a follow-up. And if you've already answered it, you can say you already answered it. But if the one-on-one tutoring is the highest leverage and we know we still have challenges with getting all the tutors that we need, I know you mentioned the online piece, what, just hypothetically speaking, let's say that the number of tutors that we have stayed flat. What would be the next one or two things that would need to be the greatest focus in order to still see the growth that we want to achieve?
Yeah, I think it's a fair question, Mr. Jordan. I think even if the number of tutors stayed flat, the access to the tutors at the right schools doesn't have to stay flat.
Okay.
So, redistributing tutors even in resources. And in fact, as we've hired tutors, we've hired them in the schools that have the highest needs first, so that we can achieve that one-on-one where we need to more than where we don't, because we realize that is the best intervention. So, that's, again, our equitable focus instead of an equal. So, instead of saying there's three tutors at every school, there might be one at a few schools and seven at another school.
Thank you for that answer. Appreciate hearing that. I guess similar to what I asked with the previous one is there, what might, outside of what you just described, is anything else that can help accelerate our, what we're seeing?
I think our constant and consistent focus on data.
Okay.
There's nothing better than that. And the discussions that are happening at the school level every month, which then happen at the classroom level more regularly, I think are the best thing that we can do.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure. All right, so.
Our Buffalo, could I, I'm sorry, could I just ask one? So, I'm just, this is just a curious question. So, as far as the next steps go, and I, your comment about, you know, the focus on data just made me think about, I mean, it's come up a lot in my thoughts as I review, you know, what's been provided to us, but where does the SEL and, you know, other whole child, you know, the MTSS, where's that come into the next steps in terms of fueling?
A great question. So, we have had a highly active division-wide MTSS team that has created highly active school-level MTSS teams, that Dr. Kimsey leads all that work. And there are ways to recommend students for, beyond tutoring, for needs that they may have, because it may not be a tutoring need. It may be an outside support. It may, you know, they may just need some one-on-one counseling or some time with their counselor, a lot of different things in place. So, that's taking place as well as this. And the whole goal with MTSS, and forgive me if I'm overstepping, Dr. Kimsey, is how all these work together. You know, instead of having, you know, oh, we're going to do a referral for this or a referral for that or a referral for this or a referral for tutoring, it becomes one process of what we're doing and also using our technology to track what we're starting to do with MTSS.
What is MTSS?
A multi-tiered system of support.
Oh, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
No, it's a good question. I'm glad it was up there, because we just say MTSS so often, but.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, next report, Dr. Poehl?
All right. So, I will say in advance, this line chart, if you've read ahead, is a little bit more difficult, so I'm going to walk through it a little bit. So, the next two measures focus on the goal, looking at reading and mathematics SOL tests by the end of twenty-six, twenty-seven, to decrease the achievement gaps to being no greater than ten percent. And looking at that through the SOL tests in grades three through eight. And so, the measure four-point-one, and I want to clarify this, too, you know, when you look at the goals and the measures, this one naturally looks like there are four measures to it, but I've made it so there's a reading measure and a math measure. So, the reading measure looks at your urgent intervention and your proficiency rate, and the math one will look at the same. If that's too much to look at in one report, the next time, I can split these up and make it four measures, but there'll be redundancy in the actions being taken, basically. So, this goal has two measures, or this measure has two points. The one is the proficiency point. And when we look at the proficiency point, we're looking at the gap groups with our students in the black SWD, SES, EL, and Hispanic subgroups. And let me, I'm going to see if I can just make that a little better. And we're going to go from the, looking at the performance increase to reduce the gap. So, the performance increase for our black subgroup would be from thirty-nine-point-eight to fifty-two percent. These performance increases, though, what we're really tracking on this one is the gap. That, you know, that's the goal, is to reduce the gap. So, you can see here in the spring, in star proficiency, the gap between students in the black subgroup and students in the white subgroup was thirty-four-point-six percent. Currently, that gap is thirty-three-point-one percent. We didn't make the goal we had set because the target was twenty-eight-point-two percent, but you can see we have reduced that gap here. So, this goal looks really at these lightly highlighted lines across the board. I hate the fact I have so much red in here because it shows that we haven't made the gaps, but transparency of data is what we've talked about administratively is much more important than making it look pretty without the red. But, so here, all of our gaps. But, so here, all of our gaps you see, so our SWD to our non-SWD was 34.8, and now it's 35.2, so that gap's increased a little bit. However, you can see the SES to non-SES was at 6.5, it's at 23.3 right now. So last year when we ended, that gap was almost nonexistent, and we have a gap right now. Even though we increased, our SES scores increased a little bit, non-SES scores went from 47.8 to 65.3. So there was a larger increase with our non-SES population. So this is what these tables look at, and then when you look at the line graph, right from the left side, this is where our actual data is. The reason we don't have a goal label here is because this is the first time we've presented this data to the board. So there was, we didn't set goals here because, remember, this one was made after, this one was one of the lagging goals that we set. So this is our first set of where the actual data overlaps the targeted data. And I'm going to work, you know, with this, it's difficult to make these colors match or to line it up, but I was well out of my five-page limit, Mr. Jordan, if I had separate graphs for each one. But it's much easier to read if I have separate graphs for each one in here. So I just want to be clear, that was a challenge I faced, and I'm still kind of fighting that challenge a little bit on how to present this data the best in a line graph.
Let me please go to seven pages.
So, maybe next time I'll just do an appendix with separate graphs as well so it's easier just to see it. And then the same goes true when you look at the urgent intervention, so it follows the same way as you go through the data points. So overall, really, the data for proficiency is although we're seeing the rates, they increase for everybody except for the English learner subgroup. However, none of the targeted gaps were met. So like I had said before with the reading, we're seeing the increases across the board generally, but we're not meeting that target gap yet. For the urgent intervention, same thing, all subgroups except for the students with disability and English learners saw declines in the urgent intervention range, so that's good. However, as with the proficiency gaps, none of the targets were met. So that's really what the data is showing us overall. And while most gap and non-gap groups showed improvement from the fall to the spring with proficiency rates, no gap groups met the winter targets. And the following gap groups had the same or better performance when compared to spring results. So again, the winter results are better than the spring for our subgroups with our black students, SWD, and SES. So they're already outperforming where we were in the spring, which is good news. And other groups have not quite reached the spring results from last year for the winter administration. So what's going well? All gap and non-gap groups showed improvement from the fall to winter except for the EL subgroup. And I just read the black SWD and SES groups saw better rates already in the winter than they did in the spring last year. And although students in the EL subgroup saw an increase in the performance gap with non-EL students, they're still ahead of the 35% target for proficiency. So the EL gap is actually better, but they didn't meet their target growth. SWD closed the gap between spring '23 and fall '23 and from fall '23 to winter '23 for urgent intervention, so that gap for our students with disabilities is closing. And other than EL, the percentage of students at the urgent intervention level decreased from the fall and winter administrations. What's not going well, and we've kind of discussed a little bit, but the students in the EL group had a decline in performance from fall to winter and saw an increase in the gap for proficiency. And while all gap and non-gap groups except for students in the EL subgroup showed improvement proficiency, then no gap groups met their winter targets. And all subgroup gaps were higher than the winter target for urgent intervention. So what are we doing? Next steps, focusing on increasing opportunities for special education teachers and EL specialists to engage in data coaching and training using Lexia and the All-in Tutoring Resources. So doing an even more intense focus with our student, with our teachers of students with disabilities in our EL staff. Increase the intensity of data-driven, teacher-led, small groups using Lexia in all of our classrooms with a higher focus on EL and special education. In March, we provided PD on data-driven effective reading instruction. And the Office of Learning Support continues to provide professional development to building-level administrators and special ed teachers on high-level practices for students with disabilities to include effective co-teaching models and specially-designed instruction. In fact, they capped out their SDI series in the March PD with our teachers this year. And our special education teachers are using the Strategic Instruction Model, or SIM, which is where they learn writing strategies, curriculum, and special education support blocks to continue writing beyond the class, the English classroom, and writing instruction at the sentence level that supports reading comprehension. And finally, the other thing that's really important in this category is providing the opportunity for additional instructional time with the attendance recovery tutoring to target students who are chronically absent because what we're seeing, a lot of the reasons why some of the scores in our gaps is because of the absentee rates. So now that we're able to do that and capture it, and the rules are very strict on that to where it has to be focused on standards that were missed, that, you know, that's another way we're capturing students back in a little bit more intensely now. So that's the update on 4.1.
Any questions around this update? Mr. Jordan?
First, just a comment. Just a comment, I think that, I'm sure the board would probably feel comfortable if having understanding matters more than trying to squeeze in the number of pages.
Gotcha.
But I will say that, you know, of the five pages, you have a cover page one and a blank page five, so I think you've got some room.
Is there a blank? Oh, there is two in there.
Yeah, so you have room to work with.
Still wouldn't fit, Mr. Jordan, but I'll get you. So we are not counting the cover page in the five pages?
No.
All right, good.
We don't need to count the cover page.
Yeah, everybody heard that, right?
You don't have to count the cover page?
It was not, there was an overlap on it, and I guess I fixed it before I printed it.
We're not that rigid, it's understanding that's important.
Yeah, I got you, I got you.
I thank you for the report and how you were able to pull things together and your, I appreciate you walking through the chart because it did offer me some challenges with the lines, but you helped me in your explanation. And so I think seeing the breakout, if everybody's agreed, would be good. So I appreciate that. Anything, I know you spoke on what the data is telling us, what's going well, not going well, next steps, anything else you think you want to highlight? You know, you mentioned, for example, the chronically absence piece. Can you just kind of restate that again, just so I make sure I'm following that?
Sure, you know, there's, and we've stated this in even research before, the direct correlation between attendance and academic performance. So our students who are struggling the most are our students who are at school the least. And now we're able to pull them back, give them credit back for that time as long as we focus on the standards and give them instruction with a certified teacher. Those are all the components that have to be put in place. So our principals are doing a wonderful job of that because that's also a piece of accreditation for chronically absent students. So this is kind of a win-win for us.
Thank you.
I don't see any more hands. Dr. Paul, last update.
One more to go.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Bessie.
Sorry, that was, you were close. So with the, could you speak to, I guess, the strategies specifically around our English language learners? And within that, you know, I guess it's hard for me to tell, you know, what's, what we're doing specifically to move the needle for that particular subgroup with the strategies you have here, although I know that it's probably integrated within that, but can you speak a little bit more to that?
So it's a more intense focus on using Lexia for them and using Ignite and the data from Ignite and using that data to help drive the push-in support and sometimes the pull-out support that they have. I would like to note, though, the data we see for our EL populations on STAR is going to be different than what we see on SOL testing because for SOL testing, the Access for Ls test still counts, it can count for them for success rate. So if a student, you know, we're seeing students on here that have very, very limited English proficiency that take the STAR assessment still as a part of trying to get some data that are included in here, that when we do the SOLs, they'll take the Access for Ls, which is a test designed for an English learner, to see if they have growth on that potential from that data point.
So this isn't predictive for that particular subgroup?
It's really not.
This is not predictive of that because of the access?
Correct. Access for Ls gives the, our EL population the structures they need to be successful to show growth in a different way where STAR doesn't have that capability.
So my question is, why? Why doesn't STAR have it? Not, I know that's, my question is really for STAR, but you know.
Yeah, it just doesn't, you know, it doesn't have it. Now, I will say our English language teachers and specialists that support our L population, they have an intimate knowledge of Access for Ls, and they have an intimate knowledge of teaching, reading, as a, you know, English as a second language. That's the whole reason why they're in those positions. So they have a better concept of where the students are reading-wise than the data that's showing up on here, but that's more anecdotal data than hard data that we can show. So that's really a hard gap for us to track within here. The only, the only thing here for us is that we can track it over time, and STAR would be consistent over time. But then this is where your comment on the number comes in because it may be one year, you know, we have fewer or greater amount of students, and that varies your data greatly.
Right. So if I can expand on this question a little bit, so if, because our goal includes the subgroup, what then along the way, what interim measure along the way or what interim assessment along the way would be a better predictor for that particular subgroup to, you know, ascertain whether they're making progress or not?
I would have to talk to Mr. Newman about that, who is our senior coordinator, because right now it's, it really is the individualized approach that we take with our L students, and it's not something that's collected holistically at the division level. It's student by student for growth for that. I don't, I just don't have an answer.
Yes, that's fine. If you could follow up, that would be helpful for my understanding or the board's understanding on that.
All right, Dr. Paul, last update.
All right, last update. So this one is going to be laid out the same, so I'm not going to go into as much detail for you, but this focuses on our math data. So the STAR mathematics data, and it starts again with the proficiency, which is our at, at or above or on watch. And you can see, again, even though we have some reds here, we're closing some gaps and we're seeing growth in scores. It's just we're not hitting that gap target as of yet. And like here, our Hispanic versus non-Hispanic, we went from 2.8 to 1.7. So, I mean, we're seeing it in different places. It's just our target was .3 because, you know, we wanted a spring target of 0% because we were at 2.8%, which might have been unrealistic in looking at gaps because we're under 10%. Usually when you're under 10%, you don't focus on it quite as much. And then our same thing with the line graph going from left to right on how that reads through. And then we look at the urgent intervention data that was posted as well. So overall, with the focus on mathematics, the data really shows, similar to reading, that we saw improvements except for the EL group with proficiency scores in the STAR mathematics test. And the same holds true with urgent intervention score range for mathematics that we're seeing the improvements in the urgent intervention across the gap groups. And as with reading, none of the targets were met. So the data shows that all groups missed the proficiency target for closing the gaps between fall and winter when compared to the target. Other than EL, all subgroups showed improvement in math proficiency between the fall and winter, and all subgroup gaps saw increases from the fall '23 assessment to the winter '23 except for students in the SWD groups. Our SWD group is closing the gaps, right, Dr. Walter? Students in the Hispanic subgroup performed better in the winter administration by .9%. A downward trend of gap differences in proficiency from the fall to winter for SWD and SES is seen in the student subgroup area as well. Students in the SWD subgroup decreased the urgent intervention gap with non-SWD students from 33.1 to 31.8. Urgent intervention percentages declined from the fall to winter administrations for students in the black, white, Hispanic, SWD, and SES subgroup, so almost all subgroups there. And although the urgent intervention gap between Hispanic and non-Hispanic saw increase, like I said before, it's well below the 10% line that we would generally look at. What's not going well, they missed the targets for closing the subgroup proficiency gaps. Most saw minimal, most proficiency gap comparisons from the fall to winter showed minimal improvement or become worse with the gap focus. All urgent intervention subgroup gaps saw increases from the fall to the winter except for the students in the SWD group, and none of the students met the urgent intervention gap targets for the winter administration. So with the mathematics, we're increasing against still the data-driven small groups in math utilizing EdMenham and ZERN, evidence-based intervention resources. So ZERN is the one the VDOE has brought to our attention statewide as an intervention product, so we're really using that pretty heavy in Tier Two and Tier Three with our All-in Tutoring, and our teachers and our students really, really like it. They're really jumping in on it and utilizing it. And we actually met with, we meet with ZERN every other week to hear about our data, and I don't have the exact quote, but I did ask, how does our data of usage and growth compare to the state? And they said it was so, so powerful how we've implemented it compared to others in the state and across the nation that they're actually going to mention Norfolk to the VDOE about how our students and our teachers have really started utilizing that product. So that's a great Tier Two, Tier Three intervention that we're using as well. So continue to increase the fidelity of usage across all of our schools and with all of our teachers, and bringing some into support some Tier One instruction, I think will help in addition to EdMenham, or we think will help. The math instructional walkthroughs with the CNI team and our math specialists at the building base to monitor implementation of the high-intensity tutoring models, targeted coaching support, coaching and monitoring the tutor's implementation of the evidence-based math instructional practice, providing additional instructional resources for response to intervention on targeted skills, provide professional development on the effective RTI, and align Tier One math instructional strategies. And then again, that additional instructional time for the attendance with our students in mathematics as well is another strategy.
Any questions for this update? Dr. Gabriel?
Really just a comment. I really appreciate the transparency of the data that you are telling us, that you're showing us. I think it's important for us to be real with the numbers that we have, but don't be so gloomy because I remember having a conversation with Ms. Camson when we were looking at how we analyze data for the accountability plan. And she was showing me that once she got her school in the mindset of what needs to be done and where the focus needs to occur, and you have that buy-in, your numbers initially are not going to be that hot. But then after a while and everyone is in the groove, because come August, everyone is going to know what to do, they're going to hit the ground running. And I am very hopeful that we will see, somebody had made a comment about accelerated growth. We're going to see that growth if everyone is committed. Teachers, students, parents, our staff, if they are committed, these strategies do work, they are effective. And so I'm very hopeful that we're going to see that accelerated growth if we can do the things that you have shared, we minimize the distractions to teaching and learning, and we implement all of these items. So I'm hopeful that we're going to see acceleration come in the future. Right now, everyone is getting acclimated to this, so it's going to improve.
I would agree, and I'll smile more, I promise. I do often say, I often say to the team, we're in a marathon, we're not in a sprint. And the marathon is methodically paced out at the beginning, and you don't sprint till you get to the end when you really are in line. And that is where we're going. And, and that is where we're going, because I think we have a, a great, a great plan and great focus. I do. And I, I tell everybody, I have the best team in the division, but don't tell anybody else that. It is awesome, they're strong.
Remember who's sitting here.
I know. Everybody heard it, I know.
Oh, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you for the report. This isn't directly tied to that. I follow and appreciate what you've, what you've demonstrated to us. When I often have conversations with parents who call me concerned about how their children are doing, I will often ask them, well, have you had a chance to look at your child's STAR report? And oftentimes, there's either confusion or they aren't sure. Can you, can you just describe what is it that Norfolk Public Schools provides for parents and when? So that, yeah. How do, how do we communicate to parents the student's performance on the STAR reports that they receive? And then is there some standardized guidance that we provide to support parents in understanding what it is that they're receiving on those reports?
Yes, there is. So after each administration, scores are either sent home or I think they also maybe posted in, or as well might be posted in Synergy for the parents to have access to. And there is, there, there is instruction in there on what, how to read it and what they're looking at as far as the data goes. And then the state is also rolling out the, the, Vivos is what we call it, platform for parents to have access to see their data over time as well. And there's, we've sent information home on that already. And we'll, each year we'll send a report on, on the, the child's performance, on the Vivos report as well, which is more directly tied to SOL performance.
I've, I've seen on the website some of the instructions. To your knowledge, are there any, if any schools or has the district done like any webinars, any other tools that if a parent wanted to, again, written at the board level, be able to understand, follow what the scores mean and how to access it?
I, I know some of our schools who have done the reading nights, their reading specialists have gone over score reports and what it looks like. Mr. Jordan, I'm not sure how consistent every school's done that, but that's something we can certainly emphasize with our reading specialists that we have at every school.
I started to submit a proposal for, what was it? What do we call it? Family Day? What was it?
The Family University.
The University.
Family University, that we do a workshop on that because of.
With STAR.
Yeah, just, just when it comes, what it means, how to read it. You know, because on the website, it'll, it'll describe what you should do. But I, I just know in my own experience, when I ask parents, they just really don't know, aren't sure. And, and I'm not apt enough to, to walk them through that. But I think if there was something that we could point to and say, you know, here's something, a tool that will be helpful to you, I think, at least in my experience, it might be helpful for some of our parents.
And we'll even look at, you know, on our, on our literacy plan site, we have parent resources. I'll look to make sure that we have like little video snippets of, of how to read the STAR report and how to access the STAR report. So it's there as well.
And if I may, Mr. Jordan, I know during our family nights, that information is provided to families. Do you want to provide a little bit more to Dr. White, would you mind, for just a minute?
Good evening. The Department of Community, Community and Community Engagement collaborates with Title I. And what we have tasked our schools with this year is to have quarterly parent professional development days. And what we do during those professional development days, we review the data, the current data, including STAR. And we have our instructional leadership team to work with our parents and train them with best practices to take home and to, you know, work with their students to improve on their academics. But that's taken place in, I know all of our schools that have family engagement specialists, and it has been an ongoing activity this year.
Thank you for that. I would, if there's anything that you all are pushing out that we can help in pushing that out, then I'd, I'd appreciate it.
And what we can do, we can add it to our master calendar as well so that we can communicate that more on a district level as well.
All right. Thank you. So we're going to move quickly. We have 2.3, 2.4, and 2.5 remaining. And we have very high-level presentations, Dr. Burtsong, CTE and special ed. And then we're going to move on to the review of textbooks. So with that said, Dr. Burtsong?
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Goschen, our illustrious Senior Director of Career Technical Education, will present our annual plan proposal. Ms. Goschen.
Good evening, Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Gabriel, Superintendent Dr. Sharon Burtsong, and our wonderful school board members. Thank you for allowing me to sprint through the CTE plan. He did the marathon, I will do the sprint, the 100-yard dash or anything quicker. However, I want to make sure that, I'm joking about sprinting, but I want to make sure you have the information that is needed so you can make an informed decision about our direction for CTE for 2024, '25. In looking at where we are, you have a copy of the presentation as well as segments of the plan. In looking at what brings forth a high-quality CTE program, before you, you have the various components. It's making sure that we have a high-quality CTE program and we've shifted and moved from years ago of a vocational education program. Those are the components of which the plan and the funding will support. And it ranges depending on the grade level. There are certain things at an elementary, middle, and high school. Some are K-12, and it really depends on the school and the pathway. Also looking at pathways, we have, I'm moving, really sprinting with this. I'm at the last slide. A component of what makes up CTE happens to be the advanced clusters and pathways. These are our clusters and pathways currently within. You're looking at clusters within each clusters or a host of pathways and our classes. Those go across the grades five through grades 12. That is what your Perkins Plan covers. So some of the things are STEM, information technology, hospitality, and a whole host of things. Students get to experience those throughout their educational years. In looking at the, what we are putting together within those pathways, not only do they have theory and rigorous instruction, there are hands-on labs and activities, work-based learning. And a major push is our credentials. These are the credentials that are changing over time. Reason why they change is because we're moving from an assessment platform to a credential platform, wanting more students to be licensed and receive national-recognized credentials. This will allow our students to be more marketable, whether they're going on to the military, the world of work, as well as on to college, and if they would like to pursue entrepreneurship. When looking at how our students happen to do, you have a snapshot of, once we take the credentials, in 2023, our students were able to earn over 2,000 credentials. We like to look at trend data to see how we're growing, how we're moving. Again, within the pandemic, there were some differences because of things couldn't, could not be done at home, some things we had half-year pandemic. But as you see, we're growing with it. And it's not just 12th graders who are participating in credentialing. We are making a, a grade nine through 12 push. Middle school students do not take credentials. And keeping in mind the credentials that our students are taking are nationally-recognized. They are what the same thing as the adults take. So they, we have a senior taking the same exact credential as a journeyman. If they're taking a licensed practical nursing, whether you're 30 or whether you're 18 or 19 in high school, we are making sure our students take the same one so they can compete globally on the workforce market. Looking to the right of that, it gives you an idea of completers. Completers are individuals who graduate with this advanced study or standard deployment, as well as completing two or more years of a CTE pathway, as well as earning. And mostly 94 or more percent of our students earn a recognized credential. And it's not just, it's worth more than the paper it's printed on. We have moved to nationally-recognize that it really is worth the weight of the student in gold, I should say. When you look at some of the accomplishments that we've made over the years, I will not read out to them, some of the things that we were able to accomplish this year. We're in our second annual Hire Our Grad, what took place today. And we brought together businesses with students. Many of our students have been offered positions. We have a youth registered apprenticeship that we celebrated, that we have a student who was surprised by his new employer when they pulled up to the technical center and they handed him keys to a company truck, a company credit card, a company phone, and uniforms. Well, you could imagine how his classmates looked. So every time they went to their interview today, the first question was, will I have a car as well? It was an interesting day, but we were so happy for that young man. And we're looking for that to happen with more. We also partnered with the City of Norfolk where they took several of our students for job shadowing and they allowed our students to work in fleet management over several weeks. So there's a lot of great things going on at the elementary, middle, and high school level. Please make sure you continue to participate. And we never wait and sort of, I guess, rely on our laurels of yesterday. We make sure we're continuing to grow. And so we're looking forward to making sure we have great things going on listed on the right side for our students, whether it's dual enrollment expansion, a regional career expo for all students, growing our own futures as we collaborate with human resources to make sure our students are well-credentured and they can be employed by Norfolk Public Schools. And mainly updating all of our CTE labs. We want to make sure that our students are well-trained on new and emerging technologies. In order to make this happen, we have to make sure that we have the budget to support it. And that's our main reason for today, making sure you understand the budget and have any questions that can be answered, that we can see where we are. Now, you will notice there's a difference in the amount allocated to CTE, simply because not only with CTE, with all title budgets, there was a new formulation that was based on the 2020 census. So we have had a significant decrease in funding. However, we do not allow that to stop us from doing what is right for children. And so with that said, we will continue to utilize funds for the majority of capital outlay and equipment, updating technology, updating equipment. We will also utilize a small portion, portion for personal services. And a lot of people always say, does that mean personnel? No, personal services is what the federal government calls it. It stipends, it's extended support for the various populations in which we serve. We normally do not put but one position on the budget for Perkins, and that would be for a full-time person to work with work-based learning, because we're growing at leaps and bounds. And that's something that you have to make sure we're on top of compliance when you're sending so many students out over the course of the year in various different fields. And then the next category is contracted and other services, fees and things associated with professional development, in services for our teachers, credentialing for our students. We like to do the higher-level credentialing, and with that comes prices. They can range from $50 for a credential on up to $300-plus for a license. And so these are the things that we've come together with internal and external stakeholders to build out the plan and properly align the funds with the needs and the interests of our students. We want to make sure when they leave us, as we say, college, career, and civic ready. We want them ready for life so they can take on whatever the world has for them and be very successful in doing so. At this time, I will take any questions that you may have about the plan, the budget, and some of the things that we will do as we move forward.
Okay, board members, you heard the presentation. Is there any questions? Mr. Clanton?
Yes, quickly. Thank you, Ms. Goschen, for the presentation that we have here. And I know that you said that there was a decrease in the Perkins fundings, and I'm taking that that, you said the census, so that's for the federal dollars that we're receiving, that one.
Absolutely.
About, how much roughly cut was that?
$211,000. And I would go down to the cents, but I want to make sure.
I know how thorough you are, yes. But the most important piece is that we're not, even though we received a decrease in the federal funding, we're still investing so that we can ensure that our students are receiving what they need to receive, right?
Absolutely. We, we have some amazing partners who have championed and rallied around us to help provide support. Our school division supports us 100%. There is nothing we've asked for that we have not received. And we are also pursuing other avenues. So we never want to rely on federal funds. So we're doing various different applications for grants, and we've been pretty successful in doing so. We want to make sure that the decrease in funds does not mean a decrease in what our students will receive.
Definitely. And a follow-up to that one, I know that Dr. Martin, I think you and I, maybe was it, two years ago? Yeah. We had an opportunity to, to see the, I guess, the clusters and the pathways and where you were moving through.
Yes.
I know not to belabor it down there, but I think it's important just for the community in the whole, you know, where we are with that. And I know we were regressing on some things, so quick, you know.
Well, each year, we try to bring on a new cluster. What we do is an assessment that gives us an opportunity to look at the labor market data and make sure that what we are bringing on board or taking off board matches what the student is interested, but also what the labor market calls for. We want to make sure we are meeting workforce demands. So for example, this year, and you were able to participate with us, we brought on a new program called Aviation and Aerospace. That allows our students to venture into something brand-new. They are getting certified as drone operators. They will move on. They can go into aviation in various aspects, the technical aspect of it, or if they want to go into aviation aerospace in terms of piloting. Our goal is to make sure our students have options and opportunities like no other. And so when we look at bringing on new programs, we survey students first. That's the only way you can do it. Because sometimes as an adult, you think, oh, this is great. And you give it to a student, they're like, no, I don't think so. So we really have to look at that. And we also make sure external stakeholders are part of the equation. We are educators, and I'm very proud at what we do, but we cannot do it all. And so we bring in individuals from various fields to make sure we're keeping pace with what the trend in the industry may be.
So we're on track this year with the new aviation program?
We are on track with the new aviation program. We have students going through the program as we speak. It's the individuals that you met at the kickoff. And then we will full-fledged have that program up and running in August. You're welcome, and thank you for your support.
Any other questions?
Just a clarification for myself. I'm sorry. Did you want to go? What's, I'm new. So maybe this comes before everyone every year, and I'm just now seeing this for the first time myself. But what's the decision before the board relied, related to this?
We, we approved the budget, the CTE budget, the application that is attached.
And that's, and that was throwing me off too, is like, we were talking about the plan, but I was always like, this looks like an application.
It is.
So, okay, okay.
And you'll see the same process with the special ed plan when it is presented as well. We have to approve the plan.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Ms. Basin?
Ms. Goschen, thank you as always. You, I don't know, bring a level of excitement to this topic and, and just amazed at the work that's being done here. So my, I have a couple of questions. So are you, and they're similar to ones I had last year, but in terms of our business and industry partners, are you, I know last year, I believe, when the question was asked, like, could we do more to bring on more partners? Or do we have the full scope of business industry partners that we want to have? How are we doing on that front?
Well, in addition to our CTAC, which is the CTE Advisory Committee, we want to make sure that we have our doors open to all businesses. Oftentimes, folks like to go with the big companies, but sometimes it's the smaller companies that bring the best experiences. So we want to have a balance of both. And so not only do we work with our CTAC advisory committees, we have smaller subcommittees and sub-advisories for each pathway and then each program. So you have multi-layers of partners that are able to work with us. And if they are not able to provide the resources, they have been wonderful with reaching out to others, their affiliates, in order to come and support us. So if you know of anyone who is willing to work with us and really have some great ideas, please let us know. I just looked over at Kelly Sito, and every time she gets an email from someone, whether it's an architect or nursing someone, she will shoot it to us. And that, because of that partnership with her, we have brought on some great partners for architecture and various areas of STEM. So our doors are open, and I must say, we have a community that truly rallies around us.
Okay. And is the Newport News Shipyard up?
Absolutely. They were part of our event. Absolutely. They were part of our event. The only thing that kept them from us today was the tunnel. It had a problem, and they couldn't get to us, but they come, they interview our students, they provide resources. And Newport News sponsors an internship program for all school divisions where teachers go and work there in the summer, so they can hone their skills on what's needed for today.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? Oh, okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Goshen.
So much.
Board members, you will see the CTE plan on the consent agenda on April 24th.
All right, Dr. Burson?
Okay, so we're going to ask Dr. Walter to come forward. She will present the proposal for our special education plan for school year '25.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chairwoman Buffalo. And I see Dr. Gabriel stepped out for a second, but good evening to the board and Dr. Burson. Thank you once again for the opportunity to continue to let me lead Special Ed Services in Norfolk Public Schools and to present this year's annual plan application. As Ms. Goshen has already said, I'm generally, if I have to run it all, a long-distance runner, but I guess I'll try being a sprinter tonight. So we're going to move right along. This year's special education annual plan application was presented to our local CAC on March 28, 2024, as required by regulation. So they did have an opportunity to review this and provide some input. As it relates to the plan itself, I do encourage members of the board, as well as the public, to go back and look at the April 5, 2023 School Board Work Session for documents related to the application and for further information about the plan in that presentation. But I do want to point out that Norfolk Public Schools is continuing to dedicate ourselves and is committed to serving roughly 4,760 students with disabilities in the division as of March 26. And all of our efforts, we continue to try to align to the division's strategic plan. In terms of the presentation this year, I do try to focus on just substantive changes from the previous year's application, which you'll note, then you'll note those on the corresponding slides highlighted in red, as well as the corresponding pages of the actual grant application noted on the slide as well. So for this slide, I do just want to point out that the actual application form itself has been revised by the state to simply request more information from divisions and a more detailed explanation about our efforts for equitable access for students, staff, and other program beneficiaries for any funds utilized under the grant, which is the GEP statement. And that's outlined on pages six and seven of the actual application document. In terms of this year's grant application, the major sections where you will see the most notable changes will be under our Section 611, which are the school age services, so all of our students with disabilities that are considered school age, not the early childhood or pre-K students. These funds support those programs. The most substantive change to this particular portion of the grant, it will continue to serve and fund the positions that you see outlined on the slide, both for Section 611 and for the C set aside. The substantive changes include the addition of a request for a budget specialist to help support grant programs and funding budgeting requirements for the department and the division. And then additionally, you'll also note that the C set aside, while still funding those same positions, we were able to greatly reduce the set aside in this year's application, and that is simply because each of our federal grants have a 24-month spending period, and the previous grant awards will allow us to continue to fund those positions with what we've budgeted here as well through the '24, '25 school year also. All right? So there are no changes to the positions or reductions in the positions, and all of those positions are currently staffed under C's at this time. That said, on the next slide, I've simply pulled out for you and for the public the budget portion of the application. So in column C, you will see the Section 611 figures. In column D are the C set aside figures, which you see, as I said, is quite a significant reduction from last year's application, and that only applies to this year's application. Cannot be guaranteed that that same situation will apply to a future application. Finally, in column E are the proportionate set aside figures. And once again, those are the amounts that we are required by regulation to set aside for any student with a disability that is either homeschooled or parentally placed but residing in the city of Norfolk. And those students are served with individual service plans, not within IEP. And then finally, as I begin to wrap up, the Section 619 portion, which is the preschool services, there are no substantive changes to this particular portion of the application. It is a much smaller portion of the overall grant, and it will continue to serve and support the three positions that you see noted on this slide. There are no changes to that portion. And once again, just a shot of the application worksheet for you all's reference. Column C notes Section 619. There are no set asides under the Section 619 portion at this time. And that said, I am then prepared to take any questions that the board have, or has. Our next steps will be to recommend board approval at your upcoming April 24 business meeting, and then also submission to VDOE by May 10. So at this time, if there are any questions or comments, I'll be happy to take any of those.
Board members, you've heard the presentation. Is there any questions? Mr. Jordan?
Thank you again for the presentation. I'm looking at the CEIS student data document. Can you remind me and perhaps us again what determines the schools that provide or have CEIS students?
Sure. So, and I knew you were going to ask me about CEIS.
Oh, good, good.
I was waiting for it.
Bet you all-
And I understand. So we have, for the last several years, prior to even the voluntary set aside, when Norfolk was under mandated set aside for C's, these are generally the schools that we've served. And that is because that our area of focus is discipline, disproportionate discipline, and trying to provide early intervention that we hope might help in reducing disproportionate discipline for African-American students with disabilities. So the reason why we select those particular schools is because our division data overall tends to demonstrate that there are higher disciplinary incidences or consequences applied at the secondary grades. So we primarily focus on grades six through 12 with our C's services.
So in essence, so if there are, if there are middle schools or K-8 schools that are not on the list, that would be an indication of a smaller concentration of population to serve? Is that what that is, or is it?
No, it's just simply based on overall division discipline data and trends where we see the greatest needs.
Okay.
That's where we've applied, we've applied, determined that we would include a C's interventionist. Also taking a look at just resource mapping and what other resources are available in schools. And that won't necessarily apply for every school that you see on that list, but we also try to take into consideration schools that have behavior interventionists in place or not. Again, the overall discipline data and the trends that speak to the volume of disciplinary incidents or where disproportionality may be a risk. That's how we continue to determine those locations.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ms. Basine?
Thank you, Dr. Walter. I have a question, and it's more related to what's in the written plan. So in the plan, you know, there's a question asked about identified barriers. And if you could help me understand the, I guess, the question and the response, I guess what the plan is actually, I guess, trying to grasp, like, what they're asking for, because I see that, you know, our responses that there were, the NPS has not identified any barriers to equitable access and participation for students. And then I guess my question is, you know, what data was examined, or what data sources were examined or used to determine that, if you can share that?
So let me go back to also to reference, so this is, on this slide where I was referencing, this was a change to the state's application form for this particular application. One thing I do want to note is that a GEP statement is required on all federal applications, and I can't speak to if the other, like, title grant applications have changed their form in the same way, because they're typically handled by different finance offices at the state level. But the special ed finance office at the state level opted to change the form to ask these more detailed questions, truthfully, as a result of the state-level corrective action plans around. So I just want to make sure I note that. Every application prior to this has always asked that we identify if there are any barriers that exist for us. And the answer from Norfolk, historically, as far as I know, has always been no. This question is not asking necessarily, obviously, we know our community, we know the needs of our students. It's not to suggest that there are not students and families that may have barriers. What it's really asking is, are there systemic barriers in how we operate that would prevent students or staff or any other program beneficiaries from being able to receive benefit of the programs and services that we are saying we're going to use these funds for. And so that's how those responses are generated. So, and again, there is a variety of data. I mean, we take into consideration, like, the discipline pieces. We look at overall division, you know, academic performance data. We consider staffing, all of those kinds of things. So it's not to say that there are not challenges, but Norfolk does not have challenges that other divisions and localities are not also experiencing. And they're not challenges that are as a result of our own policy and practices, per se, that would prohibit people from being able to access and students from being able to benefit from programs funded by the grant. I'm not quite sure if that answers your question, but-
Well, it does. And I appreciate, you know, your response, because those are exactly the thoughts that were going through my head, because we know that we have, you know, staffing, not just Norfolk Public Schools, but, you know, divisions across the country, especially we know, you know, especially those who are certified with, you know, special education qualifications.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, that's a challenge. So that's why I was curious about the response in that. And then I wanted a little bit more background as to, because these were new questions added to the application, regarding the purpose of why they were added to it, and if I heard you corrected, they were a result of, if you could say that again, sometimes what?
They're pretty much a result of VDOE's corrective actions under J-LAR. You know what I mean? So a lot of the initiatives that you see taking place are a response to one of the J-LAR recommendations or some other, some other feedback that VDOE has received from USDAOE, who has a lot of involvement right now, at least on the special education side with the state-level education agency. And so, like, as I noted with this particular question, you know, as you were, I think what you were pointing out is, in the actual application document, if you look at page six, question number two is asking that, based on any barriers, you'd pretty much describe, you know, what the barriers might be and then how we're going to address them. And while I note that there are not any barriers that Norfolk has in place, because, again, that speaks to our division policies and practices, I still noted, you know, our efforts to ensure, you know, equity and access for everyone involved, given challenges that we know our family and community might experience. But I will, I can say from my experience with the state-level education agency and response to a lot of the initiatives, including the monitoring audit this year, Norfolk does do a very good job, and it's not always represented or to the community. We do a very good job in our policies and our, some of our practices and procedures related to trying to mitigate challenges that we know our community members will come with. That's not to say that we don't have constant room for improvement and opportunity to continue meeting their needs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions?
I'm just, still not receiving full funding from IDEA, right?
Oh, no, sir. But it's not just, it's not just Norfolk. No one has ever-
Nobody has, but I just-
Full funding from IDEA.
But still not receiving the full funding from the federal government, but however, still with other funds, we're-
Yes. So I think the short answer to that is that IDEA has never been funded at the level that the federal government has said that they would fund it when initially initiated. As far as grant funds and NESR funds and Doctors Cole can speak to, I spend every dime that is assigned to learning support, and I try to spend everybody else's dime, too, if they'll let me. So that's, that is not a concern.
All right. Dr. Burson, we can move on to our final and last presentation.
Dr. Walter? Thank you. So finally, this evening, we have a couple of textbooks for your review. Mr. Brady is actually going to come forward and provide some information to us about this review, and we're hoping during our business meeting in a couple of weeks that you will vote in favor of our recommendations.
All right. If I'm the last thing you have beside you, or between you and the door, so we're going to make this, we're going to make this quick. So, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Ms. Buffalo, members of the board, Dr. Burson. I am joined today on my right by Ms. Jennifer Lopez, our senior coordinator of history and social science, and also Ms. Lisa Nash, our senior coordinator of elementary English Language Arts. And so today, we will be presenting to you our textbook recommendations for grades K-2 English Language Arts. So there's been a lot of talk tonight about literacy, all right? And also very excited about recommending a textbook for our new Advanced Placement African-American Studies course that will be launched next year across the division. So as you know, the Virginia Literacy Act requires that school divisions adopt VDOE-approved reading core curriculums for all K-5 classrooms. The VDOE, however, does not approve textbooks for use in advanced placement courses. And so we rely on the College Board there for recommended textbooks. Reading specialists, elementary English Language Arts teachers and principals, along with AP teachers, served on committees to evaluate textbooks under consideration for use in NPS. Committee members had the opportunity to evaluate the textbooks and to request additional information from the publishers about the features of each textbook. The school division used our website, social media platforms, robo-calls, text messages, and emails to invite citizens to provide feedback electronically. Textbooks under consideration for adoption were also publicly displayed at the Slover, Jordan Newby, Pretlo, and Tucker libraries. Today, we are recommending Benchmark Advance from the VDOE-approved list for use in ELA grades K-2, and Freedom on My Mind, which has been approved by the College Board for use in AP African-American Studies. Here you can see some of the features of Benchmark Advance that support strong English Language Arts instruction in our K-2 classrooms. The core curriculum provides support for teachers with resources and instructional materials, an online portal, tutorials, and videos. It makes connections between assessments and data, and provides guidance on the use of data to inform instruction and in the grouping of students. Provides for both small and whole group instruction, and it provides materials that reflect a diverse population of readers. Here you see features of the AP book, Freedom on My Mind, which provides units that are fully aligned to the College Board's course and exam description, promotes critical thinking, primary sources, focuses on the African-American people's quest for freedom as the central theme, and situates that quest in the context of American history, and also demonstrates the connection of African-American history as an integral part of U.S. history. At this moment, we have early estimates of the costs, as we are still in the process of working with publishers to calculate final pricing. This slide shows the estimated cost of both textbook adoptions, with the funding for the ELA book coming from the All-in Funds awarded by the VDOE, and funding for the AP textbook will be coming from the division's existing textbook funds. This concludes our presentation, and either I or Ms. Lopez or Ms. Nash will answer any questions that you might have about our recommended textbooks. So thank you.
Board members, you've heard the presentation. Mr. Clanton?
I have two quick ones. So I'm taking it that these are physical textbooks, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Every child will have a textbook.
Well, a physical textbook, okay. And that just-
Also digital components, then.
Digital component to it. That just kind of goes into a larger question that I'd probably like for us to revisit, and that's because I got literally asked about that this weekend, again, about our uses of devices, you know, and really where our focus and direction is with that one. Are we utilizing that for replacement of textbooks? I mean, I remember at one point, we had- I remember at one point, we had moved some funds in to do things in that one. So, I'm at some point, kind of coming back to the board as to really what that direction is and making sure that everyone has access to that one. My other component of that one was about the, and I'm not trying to be funny with this one, but just in the news, it's there. But when we talk about African-American studies, I know the Virginia Department of Education has approved, and I think that they maybe did that about two years ago, but as we're hearing that the executive administration is looking at DEI and things like that, do we have any sense that this would be in any type of jeopardy of any interference in that funding and that course being offered?
I'm not aware of any. I think it would probably be more of a local decision around...
Well, I'm just saying that we say that we've got textbook funding, and you, the first textbook is from VDOE, and then you said our existing funding is there. I just didn't, I just want to make sure that our funding is in place and solid and not that something... Yeah, okay.
Mr. Jordan?
Can I ask, add-on to what Mr. Clanton raised. You mentioned the textbooks and the electronic supplements. Do the textbooks include eBooks?
Yes. So, typically, and I don't, I think the African-American Studies book, there is an electronic component. So, the textbook is there digitally in the K-2 as well.
Because I know one of the, I think I had, trying to review the books, I was looking for eBooks and couldn't, didn't see any access to them for the purposes of review. So, I just wanted to, one, make sure that, you're saying we have a textbook for every child in the classroom, and then the eBook fits in where? Is that a, is that part of that count, or that there are eBooks in addition to the textbook count?
It's a bundle that the publisher puts together.
Okay. So, each child will have a textbook and access to an eBook?
Yes.
Okay. And then, which then the eBook will allow them, maybe I'll ask it this way. So, we have the textbooks. To what extent are they used? Do we, you know, I've asked this for a long time, you know?
Well, I can tell you, as a former Advanced Placement teacher, and Ms. Lopez has also taught Advanced Placement, the book is heavily used. You know, that is a college-level course. There is a heavy reading load, and that textbook is used. And with our focus on literacy at K-2, we will be using those materials and the resources that come with that textbook, extensive use of those materials.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Ms. Basine?
Ms. Buffalo. Yeah. So, I think that's an important distinction is that the books will be given to the student to take home, though, right? Correct?
Yes. Yes. Every child will have...
Okay. Not just in the class, and that the reliance on the eBook is not what you're saying. You're saying they will have a physical textbook.
Yes. Yeah, we have not purchased, or limited our purchase to class sets.
Okay.
Yeah.
For that, for APs.
Every child has handled a book.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? I tell you, as the night goes on, this microphone gets louder and louder.
[laughing]
All right. So, again, board members, that is our last presentation this evening. Again, you will see the CTE Annual Plan, the Special Education Annual Plan, and the textbook recommendation adoption on the consent agenda for the April 24 business meeting. Okay?
Mr. Sturt's presentation and updated...
Yes, and Mr. Sturt's updated information. Dr. Burzong, I get that to us by the...
Friday.
By April, the next meeting.
Yes.
Appreciate that. So, with no other business, I consider this meeting adjourned.